You can sit in front, I guess. Where's the banner? Huh? There's a banner. We did already. We did already. We already did. We got pictures of them there. Are you squirting the...
Ready? Call the meeting to order. Welcome, everybody. Welcome, everybody. Hello.
Hello.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. We just got out of a closed session. Is there any report?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I would like to report that Item B3, the City Council voted by a tally of four to one, Councilmember Louvenos opposed, to continue discussions with the Shattuck St. Mary's School concerning the properties whose APN numbers are set forth on the agenda on B3. That's the extent of the report.
Thank you. Could I ask Stratus Perros to lead us in the pledge?
All right. Raise your right hand over your heart. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to a republic where it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Littster.
Here.
Councilmember Louvenos.
Here.
Councilmember Judge.
Here.
Mayor Protem Kavanagh.
Here.
Mayor Mashburn.
Here.
Agenda review. Any changes to the agenda? Comments?
Ms. Mayor, I'll note we have a supplemental to Consent Item Number Three.
I'm sorry? You want to...
We have a supplemental to Consent Item Number Three.
Okay. Okay.
I move that all resolutions and ordinances presented tonight be read entitled only and all further reading be waived.
Second. Motion and second. Call for the vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Everybody looked at tonight's agenda? Anybody have a conflict with any of tonight's subject? Agenda items? None? Okay.
All right. Mr. Mayor and City Council members, the first item on the agenda is 1D1, a presentation of an honorary resolution in celebration of the 65th anniversary of the Ark of Ventura County, and Samantha Argabright is here for this presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Mashburn and members of the City Council. This evening, the City Council is recognizing the 65th anniversary of the Ark of Ventura County. There are a number of representatives from the Ark of Ventura County here to accept the honorary resolution, and I would like to invite Ark program managers Kerry Reagan and Mitchell Garcia, Board Member Mary Platt and Son Michael, Ark CEO Patty Schultz, and Director of Fund Development Julie Durand to all please come forward as I read the honorary resolution. Whereas the Ark of Ventura County was established in 1954 in the city of Santa Paula and has since served thousands of individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities and their families throughout Ventura County, and whereas the Ark of Ventura County provides programs and services to more than 700 individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities and employs 267 Ventura County residents, and whereas the Ark of Ventura County is committed to promoting and protecting the rights of individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities and actively supporting their full inclusion and participation in the community, and whereas the Ark of Ventura County fosters respect for the unique strengths and abilities of each individual served and their support staff, and together their contributions enrich our community and enhance our diversity, and whereas the Ark of Ventura County empowers independence, self-determination, and self-esteem in individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities by recognizing their talents and needs as well as barriers and obstacles they face in their quest to realize their dreams, and whereas the Ark of Ventura County supports the determined spirit of self-advocates who through their efforts are taking an active role in the continued development of a society where all people are considered equal. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the city of Simi Valley hereby commends the Ark of Ventura County on its 65th anniversary and wishes to acknowledge the outstanding work in providing services to individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities and their families in our community presented this 26th day of August 2018.
Well, thank you. This is quite a deal. 65 years. Ark is almost as old as me. But they've done a wonderful job, and I hope I can just continue to do as well as Ark has done for our community and for those that they serve. So it's a monumental task, I'm sure, but you're meeting the goals. It's just incredible. It's incredible, and we see your clients around the city and enjoy seeing them and welcome them and appreciate all that you do for them.
Thank you very much.
So let me give this to you and let you have the mic. I'm sure you want something.
Thank you, Mayor Mashburn. Thank you, City Council members. This truly is a very nice recognition for the Ark. They've been growing over the years. They've been growing because the population that they serve has been growing, and we really appreciate the recognition. You will see folks from the community out and about. You'll see them in the grocery store. You'll see them in groups. They ride the bus. They get out to a lot of the nonprofits that are in town, and that's one of the ways that they get work experience, and there's a number of people from the Ark organization who currently are employed by employers in the city. And if there's any of you employers out there that are looking for good help, please let us know. We'd be very happy to send some of our folks on over. Ryan or Kerry or Matthew, Michael, did you want to say anything?
No.
Thank you again.
Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, the next item on the agenda is 1D2, a presentation of a proclamation recognizing the day of August 26, 2019, as Women's Equality Day, and Samantha Argabright is here for this presentation.
Good evening again. Today is Women's Equality Day, a day that commemorates the adoption of the 19th Amendment that extended the right to vote to women in the United States. And I would like to invite Patricia Butler of the League of Women Voters, Mary Ann Lowe from the Simi Valley Chapter for Betsy Patterson with the League of Women Voters for Ventura County, Patricia Becker of the American Association of University Women of Simi Valley, and Jeanette Sanchez of the Ventura County Women's Political Council and Simi Valley Women's Club to please come forward as I have the honor of reading the proclamation. We have a number of people here this evening. Whereas women have been treated as second-class citizens and have not been entitled the full rights and privileges, public or private, legal or institutional, which are available to men, and whereas women have united to assure that these rights and privileges are available to all people equally, and whereas August 26 has been designated as the anniversary date of the certification of the 19th Amendment which extended the right to vote to women, and whereas women are commended and supported in their organizations and activities in their ongoing efforts to bring equal rights to all members of the community, now therefore, August 26, 2019, is hereby proclaimed Women's Equality Day to recognize women and the day in which they won their right to vote presented this 26th day of August 2018.
Well, I said I was old, but I wasn't here in 1920. But I'm proud of the people in 1920 who did the right thing and gave our ladies the right to vote. That was an important step in our history, and it continues to grow as we move forward. I would like to share with you, I personally have been able to work for, as a subordinate too, some incredible ladies. One, I was a fire investigator, and I worked for Fire Marshal Chief Diane Morgan for many years. Exceptional lady, firm but fair, and I wouldn't have had it any other way. She was so good to work for and so capable. You don't have to be able to climb buildings that are on fire and jump out of burning roofs and stuff to be a quality, quality leader that she was. So I want to point that out to you. When I left the fire service, I went to work for Judy Michaels, another very strong lady, awesome leader. I learned a great deal from Judy. Unfortunately, we lost Judy here just, what, about a year ago, and I miss her dearly, but I'll never forget the lessons that she brought to me. So we've made some great strides, but we still have more to do, and we will continue doing that. And especially here, look at our council. So we're making those strides also, so I want to thank you very much. And who would like to... Oh, also, before I forget, I have certificates here from Supervisor Bob Huber, and if you know Bob, there's nothing he dislikes more than missing a presentation like this. And so he asked me to take his place. I guess since I did take his place, and I worked for Bob for a long time, I better do what he says, so we're going to give you the certificates from the Board of Supervisors also. Okay? And that's from Bob Huber.
Okay. These are some of the people representing these wonderful organizations in Ventura County who do a lot, helping us register voters, getting out the vote, education, and civic engagement, and patriotism. The one group that isn't here tonight is the Simi Valley Women's Club, and they have been in existence since 1914. Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to do it in two sessions here. Now, my question is to Bob Huber, hold it with the proclamation facing the camera.
I just wanted to recognize the members of AAUW that are here. We came out in force tonight to celebrate this proclamation. If you want to stand, ladies, that would be awesome. Thank you.
I'd like to recognize another member of the League of Women Voters, and his name is Bob Lowe. Would you stop? Stand up, Bob. So we do have a number of men. We have two women. So they've been a great addition, you know, a good balance for our organization. So thank you very much.
And on behalf of Ventura County Women's Political Council, we're just very grateful to be receiving this acknowledgement. It's been a long time coming. We know we have a lot of work to still do, and I would just encourage our younger generation to stay involved, get out there and vote. There's a lot of sacrifices that came with this right to vote, and so let's not forget that, and we are here to help. So please feel free to reach out, and again, thank you so much for the recognition.
Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, the next item on the agenda is 1D2, a presentation of a proclamation recognizing the day of August 26, 2019, as Women's Equality Day, and Samantha Argabright is here for this presentation.
Good evening again. Today is Women's Equality Day, a day that commemorates the adoption of the 19th Amendment that extended the right to vote to women in the United States. And I would like to invite Patricia Butler of the League of Women Voters, Mary Ann Lowe from the Simi Valley Chapter for Betsy Patterson with the League of Women Voters for Ventura County, Patricia Becker of the American Association of University Women of Simi Valley, and Jeanette Sanchez of the Ventura County Women's Political Council and Simi Valley Women's Club to please come forward as I have the honor of reading the proclamation. We have a number of people here this evening. Whereas women have been treated as second-class citizens and have not been entitled the full rights and privileges, public or private, legal or institutional, which are available to men, and whereas women have united to assure that these rights and privileges are available to all people equally, and whereas August 26 has been designated as the anniversary date of the certification of the 19th Amendment which extended the right to vote to women, and whereas women are commended and supported in their organizations and activities in their ongoing efforts to bring equal rights to all members of the community, now therefore, August 26, 2019, is hereby proclaimed Women's Equality Day to recognize women and the day in which they won their right to vote presented this 26th day of August 2018.
Well, I said I was old, but I wasn't here in 1920. But I'm proud of the people in 1920 who did the right thing and gave our ladies the right to vote. That was an important step in our history, and it continues to grow as we move forward. I would like to share with you, I personally have been able to work for, as a subordinate too, some incredible ladies. One, I was a fire investigator, and I worked for Fire Marshal Chief Diane Morgan for many years. Exceptional lady, firm but fair, and I wouldn't have had it any other way. She was so good to work for and so capable. You don't have to be able to climb buildings that are on fire and jump out of burning roofs and stuff to be a quality, quality leader that she was. So I want to point that out to you. When I left the fire service, I went to work for Judy Michaels, another very strong lady, awesome leader. I learned a great deal from Judy. Unfortunately, we lost Judy here just, what, about a year ago, and I miss her dearly, but I'll never forget the lessons that she brought to me. So we've made some great strides, but we still have more to do, and we will continue doing that. And especially here, look at our council. So we're making those strides also, so I want to thank you very much. And who would like to... Oh, also, before I forget, I have certificates here from Supervisor Bob Huber, and if you know Bob, there's nothing he dislikes more than missing a presentation like this. And so he asked me to take his place. I guess since I did take his place, and I worked for Bob for a long time, I better do what he says, so we're going to give you the certificates from the Board of Supervisors also. Okay? And that's from Bob Huber.
Okay. These are some of the people representing these wonderful organizations in Ventura County who do a lot, helping us register voters, getting out the vote, education, and civic engagement, and patriotism. The one group that isn't here tonight is the Simi Valley Women's Club, and they have been in existence since 1914. Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to do it in two sessions here. Now, my question is to Bob Huber, hold it with the proclamation facing the camera.
I just wanted to recognize the members of AAUW that are here. We came out in force tonight to celebrate this proclamation. If you want to stand, ladies, that would be awesome. Thank you.
I'd like to recognize another member of the League of Women Voters, and his name is Bob Lowe. Would you stop? Stand up, Bob. So we do have a number of men. We have two women. So they've been a great addition, you know, a good balance for our organization. So thank you very much.
And on behalf of Ventura County Women's Political Council, we're just very grateful to be receiving this acknowledgement. It's been a long time coming. We know we have a lot of work to still do, and I would just encourage our younger generation to stay involved, get out there and vote. There's a lot of sacrifices that came with this right to vote, and so let's not forget that, and we are here to help. So please feel free to reach out, and again, thank you so much for the recognition.
Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, the next item on the agenda is Public Statements for the Time Allotted for Comments on Appointments and Certain Committee Informational Reports. At this time, we do not have any statement cards, public statements cards for this item. So the next item, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, is Item 31, Selection of City Council Members to Interview and Nominate Perspective Neighborhood Council Executive Board Members, and Emily Habib is here for this presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Mashburn and members of the City Council. Neighborhood Council Executive Board Members are appointed to staggered two-year terms with approximately one-third of the seats expiring every eight months. The next regular term of appointments is scheduled to commence on November 1, 2019. A general recruitment to fill 20 positions was initiated on July 1, 2019, and concluded on August 2, 2019. The city received a total of 40 qualified applicants, eight for Neighborhood Council I, 14 for Neighborhood Council II, 11 for Neighborhood Council III, and seven for Neighborhood Council IV. In previous recruitment cycles, the City Council has selected two subcommittees, each consisting of two City Council members. In January 2019, Mayor Mashburn and Councilmember Judge interviewed and appointed prospective Executive Board Members for Neighborhood Councils I and III. In February 2019, Mayor Protem Kavanagh and Councilmember Louvenos interviewed and nominated prospective Executive Board Members for Neighborhood Councils II and IV. Staff is recommending that the City Council select two subcommittees, each comprised of two City Council members, to interview and nominate prospective Neighborhood Council Executive Board Members. This concludes staff's report, and I'd be very happy to answer any questions.
Questions of staff? I have a question. Comment? Question? Did you have one?
Not a question. I was going to volunteer with Mike Judge to be... But that's... We're not at that point yet, so I'm not there. I didn't say that.
Maybe a statement, and I made this on the Cultural Arts Center Foundation selection process, that I've been involved in the process a few times now, and I think it's time to review the questions and take a close look at them and try to eliminate some of the redundancy in the questions, and if necessary, extend the time for each candidate, so there's a little more time for not only the candidate but also for the council members doing the interview process to get to know the candidate a little bit better. I think the time period is too short, and I've come to learn what an important position this is. It's very important to this council, and so I think the council ought to have the time and take the time to make sure they make the proper selection and that the candidates understand fully what they're applying for, so they understand what their duties are and what the commitment is. So just a statement, not looking for an answer back, just letting you have that, okay? Thank you. Okay. So at this time, we have...
And I just wanted to make a comment, too, that I was impressed that we have, for every one of the neighborhood councils, more candidates than positions... In fact, you have twice the number, 40, if I'm honest, 40 candidates to fill 20 positions. And so I think it speaks to our community involvement and desire to make a difference in our community that we have those candidates, so...
Okay. So now...
Now, I would like to nominate Mike Judge and myself to serve in that capacity for interviewing, and having been a previous member of Neighborhood Council III, I know what an honor it is to serve in that capacity. It'd be lovely to be on the other side.
Okay. So you'll be Team One, maybe?
Maybe. I know, you've got to promote us in.
I'd like to nominate myself as well, but I don't want to nominate DeeDee without her consent.
I was just going to ask the mayor if you wanted to, or I will want to do it. It's up to you. I don't know what your commitments are.
I don't either. I'm committed to whatever Sue puts on my calendar, so it's up to you. I'd be happy to do it, but if you want to do it, that's fine.
I'll do it. I enjoy it. It's really nice to get to know our Neighborhood Council applicants.
Okay. That's Team Two. So we need a motion.
I move that Councilmember Judge, Councilmember Littster, are Team One for interviews. I don't know if we're numbering teams here. And Mayor Protem Kavanagh and myself are Team Two for the Neighborhood Council interviews.
I want to be One.
You can be One.
You just took the words out of my mouth. I was going to say, we don't make up Team T-shirts or anything like that, because this is very unofficial. It was just a way I could mark next to them.
We'll let Emily choose who's on what team. How about that?
Okay. So there'll be Team A and B.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion and second. Call for the vote.
Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, the next item on the agenda is Item 4A, Public Hearings. Let the record show that due notice was given as required by law, and an affidavit to this effect is on file in the office of the city clerk. The reports of the city staff relating to these matters shall be made a part of this record of this meeting. Speakers during public hearings shall limit their comments to matters relevant to the item on the agenda and may be ruled out of order if comments are unrelated to the item. If you challenge to report any of the City Council decisions made here tonight, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at this public hearing. The time within which judicial review must be sought is governed by California Code of Civil Procedure Section 1094.6. Agenda Item 4A, a public hearing to consider a request from Richard D. and Kathleen Parkinson for a General Plan Amendment, GPA 102, to change the general plan land use designation from general commercial to industrial. A specific plan amendment, SP-S-7, Amendment Number 27, to change the West End specific plan use designation from subregional retail to general industrial. A zone change, Z-S-742, to change zoning designation from subregional retail specific plan, SRSP, to general industrial specific plan, GISP. And a conditional use permit, CUP-S-823, to construct two industrial buildings that total 31,124 square feet for a general contracting business located on a 2.87-acre parcel at the south side of East Cochrane Street, approximately 1,000 feet west of Capper Lane, 600-620 East Cochrane Street. An introduction of an ordinance and an adoption of a resolution and the project's mitigated negative declaration. We have Stratus Perros and Jennifer Santos here for this presentation. Mr. Mayor, please begin the hearing.
Okay. Mr. City Attorney, in the entrance of interest of avoiding the redundancy that I just spoke of, I could avoid reading that paragraph that the clerk just read?
Yes, you could skip right down to, "May I have a reading?"
May I have a... To the clerk, "May I have a reading of the ordinance and resolution?"
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The first reading, Agenda Item 4A, First Reading Ordinance Number 1299. An ordinance of the City Council of the city of Simi Valley for the approval of specific plan amendment number SP-S-7, Amendment Number 27, and a zone change, Z-S-742, and adopting the mitigated negative declaration to amend the West End specific plan, SP-S-7, Amendment 27, to change the land use designation from subregional retail to general industrial, and to change the zoning designation from subregional retail specific plan, SRSP, to general industrial specific plan, GISP, for the 2.87-acre parcel located at the south side of East Cochrane Street, approximately 1,000 feet west of Capper Lane, 600-620 East Cochrane Street. Agenda Item 4A, Resolution Number 2019-32. A resolution of the City Council of the city of Simi Valley approving general plan amendment number GPA-102 and conditional use permit number CUP-S-823, and adopting the mitigated negative declaration to amend the general plan use designation for a 2.87-acre parcel located at the south side of East Cochrane Street, approximately 1,000 feet west of Capper Lane, 600-620 East Cochrane Street.
Thank you. Are there any ex parte communications to report? Okay. Seeing none, I'll report that I talked to the applicant prior to the pre-screening, which was two years ago? Okay. And I haven't spoken with the applicant since that time. Okay. I have an oral report. Stratus Perros.
Good evening, Mayor Mashburn and members of the council. The applicants, Richard and Kathleen Parkinson, own Premier Interior Development Incorporated, a general contracting company that is located a short distance from the project site. This project is an example of an important project. It's a successful local Simi Valley business that wants to stay in the city and expand and grow their operations. A general plan amendment request like this one before we tonight require approval of a general plan amendment pre-screening, as the mayor indicated, prior to submitting a formal application. In October of 2017, the City Council approved a general plan amendment pre-screening request. The applicants then submitted their formal application for this project about a year later, and the applicants presented this application in May of 2019 to Neighborhood Council I, where they resulted in a unanimous recommendation of approval. This project was then presented at the June 2019 Planning Commission meeting, in which the Planning Commission also unanimously recommended approval. Senior Planner Jennifer Santos is here tonight, and she'll present the staff report.
Good evening. The applicants are requesting to build two industrial buildings that total 31,124 square feet. They're requesting a building. 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 They're requesting a building.
To get to know the candidate a little bit better. I think the time period is too short, and I've come to learn what an important position this is. It's very important to this council, and so I think the council ought to have the time and take the time to make sure they make the proper selection and that the candidates understand fully what they're applying for, so they understand what their duties are and what the commitment is. So, just a statement, not looking for an answer back, just letting you have that, okay?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, so at this time, we have a...
And I just wanted to make a comment, too, that I was impressed that we have, for every one of the neighborhood councils, more candidates than positions. In fact, you have twice the number, forty, if I'm wrong, it's forty candidates to fill twenty positions. And so I, I think it speaks to our community involvement, desire to, to make a difference in our community, that we have those candidates, but, so...
Okay, so now...
Now, I, I would like to nominate my judge and myself to serve in that capacity for interviewing, and having been a previous member of Neighborhood Council Three, I know what an honor it is to serve in that capacity. It'd be lovely to be on the other side.
Okay, so you'll be Team One, maybe?
Maybe. I know, gotta promote us in.
I'd like to nominate myself as well, but I don't want to nominate Dee Dee without her consent.
I was just gonna ask the mayor if you wanted to, or I will, one of the... It's up to you.
Um...
I don't know what your commitments are.
I don't either.
[laughing]
I'm committed to whatever Sue puts on my calendar, so, so it, it's up to you. I'd be happy to do it, but if you want to do it, that's fine.
I'll, I'll do it. I, I enjoy it. It's, it's really nice to get to know our Neighborhood Council applicants.
Okay, that's Team Two. So, we need a motion.
I move that, um, Councilmember Judge, Councilmember Littser, are Team One, for interviews. I don't know if we're numbering teams here. And Mayor Pro Tim Kavanaugh and myself for Team Two for the Neighborhood Council interviews.
I want to be One.
Oh, you can be One.
You just took the words out of my mouth. I was gonna say, we don't make up Team T-shirts or anything like that, because this is very unofficial. It was just a way, or I could mark next to them.
We'll let Emily choose who's on what team. How about that?
Okay, so there'll be Team A and B.
There you go. I'll second.
Okay, motion and second call for the vote.
Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, the next item on the agenda is Item 4A, Public Hearings. Let the record show that due notice was given as required by law, and an affidavit to this effect is on file in the office of the City Clerk. The reports of the city's staff relating to these matters shall ma- shall be made a part of this record, of this meeting. Speakers during public hearings shall limit their comments to matters relevant to the item on the agenda, and may be ruled out of order if comments are unrelated to the item. If you challenge to report any of the City Council decisions made here tonight, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at this public hearing. The time within which judicial review must be sought is governed by California Code of Civil Procedure, Section 1094 dot six. Agenda Item 4A, a public hearing to consider a request from Richard D. and Kathleen Parkinson for a general plan amendment, GPA 102, to change the general plan land use designation from general commercial to industrial. A specific plan amendment, SP dash S dash seven, Amendment Number 27, to change the West End specific plan use designation from subregional retail to general industrial. A zone change, Z dash S dash seven four two, to change zoning designation from subregional retail specific plan, SRSP, to general industrial specific plan, GISP. And a conditional use permit, CUP dash S dash eight two three, to construct two industrial buildings that total thirty-one thousand one hundred and twenty-four square feet for a general contracting business located on a two-point-eight-seven acre parcel at the south side of East Cochrane Street, approximately one thousand feet west of Capper Lane, six hundred dash six twenty East Cochrane Street. An introduction of an ordinance and an adoption of a resolution, and the project's mitigated negative declaration. We have Stratus Perro and Jennifer Santos here for this presentation. Mr. Mayor, please begin the hearing.
Okay, um, Mr. City Attorney, in the entrance of interest of avoiding the redundancy that I just spoke of, I could avoid reading that paragraph that the clerk just read?
Yes, you could skip right down to, "May I have a reading?"
May I have a reading? To the clerk, may I have a reading of the ordinance and resolution?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The first reading, Agenda Item 4A, first reading ordinance Number 1299. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Simi Valley for the approval of specific plan amendment Number SP dash S dash seven, Amendment Numbers Twenty, Amendment Number 27, and a zone change, Z dash S dash seven four two, and adopting the mitigated negative declaration to amend the West End specific plan, SP dash S dash seven, Amendment 27, to change the land use designation from subregional retail to general industrial, and to change the zoning designation from subregional retail, specific plan, SRSP, to general industrial, specific plan, GISP, for the two-point-eight-seven acre parcel located at the south side of East Cochrane Street, approximately one thousand feet west of Capper Lane, six hundred to six twenty East Cochrane Street. Agenda Item 4A, Resolution Number 2019 dash three two. A resolu- a resolution of the City Council of the City of Simi Valley approving general plan amendment Number GPA dash one zero two, and conditional use permit Number CUP dash S dash eight two three, and adopting the mitigated negative declaration to amend the general plan use designation for a two-point-eight-seven acre parcel located at the south side of East Cochrane Street, approximately one thousand feet west of Capper Lane, six hundred dash six twenty East Cochrane Street.
Thank you. Are there any ex parte communications to report? Okay, seeing none. I'll report that I talked to the applicant prior to the pre-screening, which was...
Two years ago.
Two years ago? Okay, and I haven't spoken with the applicant since that time. Okay, I have a oral report. Perros?
Good evening, Mayor Mashburn and members of the council. The applicants, Richard and Kathleen Parkinson, own Premier Interior Development Incorporated, a general contracting company that is located a short distance from the project site. This project is an example of an important project. It's a successful local Simi Valley business that wants to stay in the city and expand and grow their operations. A general plan amendment request like this one before we tonight require approval of a general plan amendment pre-screening, as the mayor indicated, prior to submitting a formal application. In October of 2017, the City Council approved a general plan amendment pre-screening request. The applicants then submitted their formal application for this project about a year later, and the applicants presented this application in May of 2019 to Neighborhood Council One, where they resulted in a unanimous recommendation of approval. This project was then presented at the June Planning, June 2019 Planning Commission Meeting, in which the Planning Commission also unanimously recommended approval. Senior Planner for, Senior Planner Jennifer Santos is here tonight, and she'll present the staff report.
Good evening. The two, the applicants are requesting to build two industrial buildings that total thirty-one thousand one hundred and twenty-four square feet to operate their general contracting business in one of the buildings. They plan to lease out the second building to a future tenant. The property is bordered by Cochrane Street to the north and the Southern Pacific Railroad to the south. Sorry. Surrounding land use designations include commercial to the north and west. The property to the west of the project site is vacant and owned by Home Depot. However, the site is unbuildable because of the substandard lot size. The south and east properties are also industrial properties. The proposed use currently will not allow, is not allowed under the general commercial designation. The applicants are requesting to change this designation to industrial, which would match the properties to the east and the south. The specific plan amendment from subregional retail to general industrial will be consistent with the proposed general plan amendment and zone change. This will result in new industrial uses that are adjacent to other industrial uses. The requested zone map amendment will also be consistent with the proposed amendments. Further, this will allow the requested general contracting business to operate onsite with a conditional use permit. Access to the site is from Cochrane Street by one, one driveway located on the east end of the property. Both buildings will be identical in design, and each building will be fifteen thousand five hundred and sixty-two square feet. The, this project complies, complies with all of applicable development standards such as setbacks, height, parking, and landscaping. There are one hundred and one parking spaces and two required loading areas that will be located at the rear of the building. Between the buildings will be an open patio for the employees and visitors, and at, and at the rear will be the covered storage area for their equipment. And two covered out trash enclosures on the east and west sides of the property that will serve each building. The storm, the site's stormwater retention will be stored under the west driveway of the proposed parking Each building will be, will can be two stories in height. The first floor will consist of seven thousand nine hundred and two square feet of storage area and four thousand one hundred and eighteen square feet of office space. The second story mezzanine will include a three thousand five hundred and forty-two square foot office space, and the rest will be open to the warehouse below. Approximately sixty new water-efficient trees and assorted shrubs and ground cover will be installed throughout the site. As required by the general plan, the landscaping will include a ten-foot wide enriched parkway, including a five-foot side, five-foot wide Both building entrances will face a parking lot. The north elevation provides a view of the patio area that is between the buildings, and the bottom elevations depict the architectural details that are applied to both sides of the buildings. The rear renderings depict the rear loading and out, and outdoor storage areas that will sit above the South, Southern Pacific Railroad. As part of the recommended conditions of approval, the applicant will be required to construct a sidewalk along the property's frontage. On August nineteenth, the applicant, applicant expressed concerns about the lack of a continuous sidewalk on each, on each side of the property, and that the sidewalk would terminate to no sidewalk, causing potential safety concerns. The required sidewalk will provide consistency with the general plan and the West End specific plan, as referenced in the staff report on page six. The specific plan provides standards to construct a five-foot sidewalk at each side of Cochrane Street. However, the specific plan cites that sidewalks within this area of Cochrane Street are determined by the Planning Commission. At the June nineteenth Planning Commission Meeting, the Planning Commission discussed the, the merits of the sidewalk and, and recommend it as part of the approval. Based on the analysis and the criteria for review of the request and city's status evaluation of the proposal, the following alternatives are available for City Council. The Planning Commission recommends Alternative One. This concludes staff's recommendation, staff's presentation, and we are available for any questions.
Okay, it's time for questions. Questions of staff. Anybody?
I do. I'm, in the pictures that we have, we can't see beyond where the sidewalk ends. Do we have sidewalks on the south side of Cochrane, both to the east and the west from there?
Yes, so this lot right here has no sidewalk, but the next lot to the west, to the east, has a sidewalk.
Okay, that's what I thought. Thank you.
Any other questions? I, I have a question. The question is the sidewalk also. The, see, look at that picture to the right or to the east where it shows the yellow sidewalk, then it stops, and then there's, I think those are condominium-type buildings. There's no sidewalk in front of those, correct?
That's correct.
And, uh, will, is there any requirement that they would ever have to put in sidewalks in front of those buildings?
No.
Okay, so, and then to the west of the yellow line, what are the chances of putting in sidewalks there?
That parcel is actually undevelopable. It's owned by Home Depot, but they really can't do anything with it, so it's very likely it's just gonna remain as an undeveloped piece of land for, in perpetuity.
And, and a follow-up question to that, that I drove by there, that's a guard rail for, because it's such, such a steep drop-off, correct?
Correct.
That goes for, how, how long would you say that frontage? So there really is no other sidewalk to the east until you get to the very corner at the gas station. Even Jack in the Box does not have a sidewalk there, correct?
That's correct.
That'd be to the west.
West, I'm sorry, I said wrong. Excuse me, to the west. Apologize. So there's really, okay. And so what you're saying is that there, there, there'd be no way, they'd be compelled, compelled to have a sidewalk there, um, Home Depot, I should say.
Yeah, and until a project comes along to develop the site, that's typically when projects like this is also vacant and undeveloped.
Sure.
We wait for a project to come along and get a sidewalk built. That's the typical development process.
Right.
We wait for development.
But you're saying that this one's undevelopable?
That the property to the west is likely never to be developed because of its law configuration, topography, so...
And how long ago was the property to the east developed, when it was not required to have a sidewalk?
That was developed in approximately nineteen eighty-six, and if you have any, we can defer to Public Works on certain criteria on that, too.
Okay.
Okay, um, what I don't think we want to be famous for is a sidewalk to nowhere. I mean, we have trains to nowhere, we have bridges to nowhere, but fortunately, they're not in Simi Valley that I'm aware of, so, um, could, we have some kind of language to where, in a certain time period, if for some reason either side decides to develop and put a, a sidewalk in, which I, I see as highly, highly unlikely, could we then co, have an agreement with this developer that if that happened in the next five years, ten years, whatever, that then we would ask him to, him or her, I'm sorry, ask them to put a sidewalk in, but if not, then just leave it without, because I, I just can't imagine anybody using the sidewalk on that side of the street when they have a complete sidewalk on the opposite side, and down at First Street, there's lights that get you over to that side of the street.
This is a Public Works issue, and the Public Works Director is here, and as far as giving the proper answer to that question, I would defer to him.
Passing the buck.
[laughing]
I, I think that's an acceptable compromise. It's, it's happened before in other developments where something may be missing, and if the city comes in and does something in the future, then the developer's required to complete whatever he was required to do, so...
And then, to your knowledge, in the meantime, we're not in any type of violation. We don't, we definitely don't want to put the developer into some form of ADA violation, anything like that, so we're, we're clear there?
Yeah, I'm not aware of anything like that.
Okay.
Ron, I have a question for you while you're there, because I think it's gonna involve you. So, there is a road, or you come out of Home Depot, et cetera, right there. Is there any plans, or would there be a requirement of a crosswalk that would access a pedestrian way to cross the road at that point, to get to this facility?
Not at this time. It could be looked at in the future.
But that wouldn't be up to the developer, that would be a, a Public Works decision?
That's correct. It'd be a city implementation.
Gotcha, okay. Thank you.
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Sure.
Is it possible?
Sure.
You know, there's gonna be people working in these industrial buildings, and across the street, I mean, they're gonna go to lunch, there's, you know, there's a lot of people who want to be healthy and fit, and, you know, I have a lot of colleagues who walk during their lunch hour, because that's how they get their, their exercise in. It, it is possible that people would cross on the side that's before Home Depot, that they would go to Aldi and grab some lunch, or go to, you know, the Walmart across the street and grab some lunch, or go to Home Depot and want to cross over there, and it would be safer for them to have that sidewalk there. Is that correct? If they chose to cross...
If they chose to cross where the two driveways are now...
Right there.
Oh, if they chose to cross there, yes. A sidewalk from, from the development over to that point would be...
Is there, there's no other place for, if people did want to walk, like, if they just wanted to walk and get their extra two thousand steps in during their lunch hour, they could use that sidewalk, whereas if they walked around the building, since that's where all the parking is, that would be not, not as safe. Is that correct?
That could be one use for a sidewalk if the council chooses to implement the sidewalk.
And the planning, according to the report, the Planning Commission is recommending the sidewalk?
That, that's what I understand, yes.
Do, do you know specifically why they recommended the sidewalk?
I can speak to that one. The chairman of the Planning Commission basically said, "This is how we build the city out in these incremental, in, in these increments. Hopefully, something will happen down the road. Sometimes there might be funding down the road, where we get grants to fill in sort of these gaps in our infrastructure." But the feeling is, is that if each and every project comes along and builds their fair share, we'll get to a whole sooner than rather than later.
So, for the benefit of the, the future growth of the city, that's why the Planning Commission decided to require a sidewalk?
Yeah, they, they wanted each and every project to meet their part of the requirement.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, would the applicant like to speak?
Good evening, Mayor Mashburn and members of the City Council. My name is Rick Parkinson. I am the applicant, and my wife Kathy and I own the property. We are the developer. We own the general contracting business, all in one, one-stop shop. So, thank you for your time this evening, and let me address you. It's been nearly two years since we were here, and the pre-application, so we're looking forward to the next steps on this process. Is that me?
Uh, are you ready?
I would like to. Oh, I could talk to that, would be helpful. I've got this here up if...
You're displaying it?
Oh, yeah, I guess we could do that. Could you help me with it, this way, guys? Sorry about that. We had a couple of posters of the slides, just for the audience's benefit. Thank you. So, as has been mentioned, it's a three-acre vacant parcel. It's a sliver of land that is across from Home Depot. This is a family business. My son and son-in-law are in the business. We've been here nearly twenty years, and Lord willing, we're not gonna be leaving anytime soon. Our business been, been around for twenty-six years, and I have a presentation I'd like to share with you that, right in here, guys, if we could, and keep them down low there. Perfect. It's an interesting piece of land. I've looked at it over a number of years, and we're hopeful that we're able to develop this. We're a unique general contractor in that we're not a back-of-the-pickup, build homes and those types of things. We are a specialty general contractor that build out restaurants and industrial projects, hotels, churches. We do a lot of work at LAX, and for better for worse, we can all talk about LAX, but if you've seen any new restaurants or retail stores down there in the last five to ten years, it's likely that we've built them. We do dozens of projects there, in other airports in other states. We're active in Hawaii. We just recently finished a renovation down in Austin, Texas. We, as has been mentioned, the zone needs to be changed in this area. However, working with staff, we find that our request, we're asking to put a building there on this property that is very consistent with an adjacent building, so we're hopeful that that is consistent with what the city would approve. Two identical buildings around sixteen thousand feet, we intend to occupy one, and, I'm trying to get that. That's me, not you? Because I don't see any, I'm, I'm up, but I don't see any...
Here.
Okay, it'll, it'll pop up now in a minute. We had this practice run earlier. The warehouses are a little bit oversized for a typical warehouse, meaning the office-to-warehouse component. We are primarily a staff of individuals. We don't do manufacturing. We store and receive crates of high-end tile and things that come in from out of the country, or cabinetry, and we hold it for a short period of time and then redeliver it, so we don't have the odd number of construction materials that, that might be... There we go. Thank you. Now we can view... Perfect. It's a pretty level site. It will sit down from Cochrane, so as you look onto these buildings, you will, you will kind of be looking across the valley, so we, we hope that it's sitting down will be a, a positive thing. And then I'll, I'll bring up, if I could, at the end of this little presentation, the concern about, at least my perspective on the, on the sidewalk. Here's an example of some of our work, just to, to let you see what we do and where we do it. Duty-free stores, restaurants. We're high integrity, high vision, high values in our company, and it is reflective in the product that we do, as well as the way we run our business. So, some of our hallmarks are, we're a design builder, we hire architects and engineers, we do construction management and tenant improvement. And I just thought it would be helpful to you to see a little bit about who we are. That is the site, and you've seen some of this before. There's some more pictures of the existing property, and there's an aerial view, and the, just kind of, again, I'm gonna, I have another photo to show you, but this is the area where the sidewalk, and I, I will call it what I called it in my letter to the staff, was this kind of a sidewalk to nowhere. And I, I'm prepared to build the sidewalk. I have some concerns about safety, and I think they're valid concerns, and, and really just safety and practicality. So, two buildings, very easy to see. Here's Home Depot over here. That's what they would look like from the street. These are very accurate to our architectural drawings. Our architectural drawings are nearly complete, or are complete, and have been submitted to the city for review, so we're well along in the design, and this was a, kind of a risk that we took, assuming that we could obtain your approval. Give you a little more visual there. And, kind of the theming, site plan, there's a lot of grading to do. This site had some challenges on its ground, so we had to do a lot of analysis and study in order to prove it out technically, that it would work, and everything seems to work. I think Jennifer already talked about the landscaping. There's some colored elevations. So, it, it will look very much like an office building, even though it's a warehouse. Lots of windows, so on and so forth. So, where are we at? We've been in the process for quite some time. As Sidman mentioned, we're cleared with, well, I got that on the next slide, but we're in the permitting and plan check process now, and if all things come together, we could be under construction as early as November, or after the first of the year, depending on the weather and other considerations. So, right, yeah, right now, we had a nice meeting with the Neighborhood Council and the Planning Commission. We're here tonight, still in plan check permitting. We know that's an unknown process, but it's, we're, we're in process on that. And, so now, I'd just like to touch on the sidewalk, and this is not, I will, it's in our conditions already, put a sidewalk in, and I met with the Planning Commission, and as I understood it, they just felt like they didn't have, the authority did not include it, because that's what the, I understand the, the city plan to say, you gotta put a sidewalk in, and so I actually came and I met with Public Works and their traffic engineer, and said, "Are you sure? Not sure this makes sense." One of my concerns, frankly, is what's, what I call a K-rail or a guard rail. Here's a picture of Jack in the Box. So, here's an idea. They have a walkway that comes to the edge of the street and a small portion of sidewalk. This is the piece of property all the way to the west. So, if you go all the way from our property, the first time you hit sidewalk would be right here in front of Jack in the Box. There, there's a short little section, and then there's a walkway that gets to the property. And this is just another visual, kind of looking down. So, there's grass in front of Jack in the Box, and then it's bare ground, and then there's this K-rail, and you can see the steepness of this dirt right here, where so, and, talk about an undevelopable piece of property, that's what you're looking at. It's about five feet wide, and it's a sheer drop-off. So, this is on the furthest west portion of this K-rail, and it continues all along here. So, the proposed sidewalk would need to come all the way up on the other side of this K-rail, and I was out there this morning just to double-check it, but if, I mean, I'm the practical person. If I walk down the sidewalk, and I appreciate the thought that somebody might walk back and forth there, and if that's your preference, I'm, I'm good with that. But, thinking about this steep slope, adjacent to the sidewalk, it probably would require a sidewalk, a retaining wall, and a guard rail to, for the safety of anybody that would walk down this sidewalk any too far down here. I mean, you could put, certainly put one, a portion maybe up to the guard rail, but then I'm wondering, if I get down here halfway through the guard rail, and I do want to cross the street, I'm gonna be climbing over the guard rail, and then you got cars going by here quite fast. So, it, I mean, I had my safety vest and hard hat on, because I didn't want to be too dangerous. And then this is the east end of our property, and it begins, and you can begin to see here... And then this is the east end of our property and it begins, and you can begin to see here the terrain in front of this condo complex. So it's, again, it's, it's natural and it's, and there's really no, no place to go. And I appreciate the fact, we talked with Public Works, well, maybe the Parkinson's could put a sidewalk in front of this building instead of their building. So that the other one that exists to the east, where the existing sidewalk starts and stops is clear down here somewhere, so. That's my, my thoughts on the sidewalk, and I'll defer to the wisdom of this group. And right now, the way the conditions are written is to put the sidewalk in. I'm just asking that, I think this group has the authority, if I'm not mistaken, to make some alternate recommendation or approve something other than the full sidewalk or partial sidewalk. So, with that, any questions?
I've actually walked. I've, I've driven by there a lot.
Okay.
So I have friends on both sides of Simi Valley, so, and I have seen people walk on the other side just because of the time of the day, if it's, you know, sunny or not sunny. And I have seen people walk in that bike lane. They're not supposed to, but I have seen people walk from Jack in the Box and then walk in the bike lane and then walk, and if there was a sidewalk there, you know, it would be, it would be safer, you know, for people to have a sidewalk there.
Oh, sure. I would think if it could connect, if I could connect all the way to Jack in the Box, that might make sense, but it, there's not any property there to go much. I would still be, I think we'd be a quarter of a mile, maybe a half a mile to, to Jack in the Box, even if we put our sidewalk in. We'd still be quite, quite a ways from Jack in the Box. But I understand your point.
And, and, you know, there are people, for whatever reasons, they choose, I don't want to walk on that part of the sidewalk, I'd rather walk on the other side of the street. I, you know, I've done it just for shade. Like, hey, I just want to walk on that side of the street because there's a sidewalk there and there's shade. And I have seen people in, you know, the almost 20 years I've lived here, walking on that.
Good to know.
And the other thing I'm thinking of, you know, there's a bike lane there, so if your bike did break down, you know, you might just go ahead to where you see the sidewalk and, you know, maybe repair your, your bike lane there.
Sure.
And the other, you know, I do defer to the planning commissioners. I don't think they would make you build a sidewalk to nowhere. I'm sure there is, you know, a reason, and this whole reasoning of having a general, you know, plan and everyone doing their part. And, you know, I appreciate you saying that you're willing to build the sidewalk, even a modified version of it.
Yeah.
I grew up in Silmar and we had, you know, properties that didn't have any sidewalks because it was, you know, equestrian zoned. And, you know, there were some people, like my parents, they were the first ones to build a sidewalk.
Okay.
And it would have been a sidewalk to nowhere, except for eventually the neighbors had to build sidewalks too.
Very good.
So, you know, I don't want that to be the logic in terms of, well, there's no sidewalk on there and there, eventually there may be at some point.
I appreciate your point of view. Thank you.
One of my comments and concerns about the sidewalk is that if you build a partial sidewalk to where the guard rail begins, we're going to have people trying to walk between the guard rail and that, on that little dirt path, more likely.
Yeah, the requirement actually requires us to go 100 feet or maybe further behind the, not just to the guard rail, but along the backside of the guard rail for quite a distance. So then it would end, and again.
Are you required by the planning commission to go all the way to the next intersection?
No. It would only be for the distance of our property line, which...
My concern is that people would walk on that sidewalk and think that they can cross the street at some point, which they can't. Because you can't cross the street. The driveway to Home Depot is not a crossing, that's not an area to cross the street. That's a driveway. You have a controlled intersection down by the gas company property and you have a controlled intersection at the first entrance to Home Depot, a little further up, a little further west. So if you were to build a sidewalk that ended somewhere in the middle of that guard rail thing, I can just only assume that people would think that they're going to cross the street there, which would be highly dangerous.
It'd be crazy.
I mean, you could take it for what it's for. This is not a, I'm a contractor and I'm very safety-conscious, everything that we do. And frankly, this is a safety comment on my part. This, it's not a, the millions of dollars we're going to have to spend on this, it's an inconsequential cost for the sidewalk. I just don't think it makes practical sense, from my perspective.
And I just have a question. I want to make sure I understand, because I just was there a couple hours ago driving it, because I really wanted to look at it closely. So that entire guard rail, part of that is a portion of your property that we're talking about?
It is. It sits in front of our property and I could get the exact measurement, but it's...
But just a, just a portion of it?
Correct.
Okay. Gotcha. Okay.
Well, to me, the fact that the guard rail is there as a buffer, because the bike lane is there, shows that there's, you know, some need for protection for the, for people who do use that bike lane, whether they're biking or walking. And having the sidewalk would be even more of a buffer for the people using that bike lane.
I think, I don't know, maybe Public Works could answer this, but I think the guard rail there is, because it's such a steep slope, if a car was to go off the road, it would go right down to the railroad tracks. So even, like I said, the concept of building the sidewalk there, it's so steep, it would probably have to include a guard, a safety guard rail, otherwise you're going to fall down a pretty...
It'd be more of a, it would be more, if you had the sidewalk there, it'd be more of a buffer zone than just the guard rail. Is that correct?
One, I don't know that it, it's not going to get any more real estate. There's still, there's dirt there, so.
Let me, let me interrupt. We're, we're out of order.
Okay, I apologize.
Well, it's not your fault. It's our, our fault.
Okay.
I'm sorry. What we want to do is find out, are there any public comments?
There are no cards submitted for...
Is there anybody in the council chambers wishing to be heard on this project? Yes, ma'am, if you come up and fill out a card?
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll have an opportunity for the council to ask questions when scheduled. And comments. We have a lady filling out a card.
I don't wish to be a pain, but this has always bothered me about Simi Valley. We don't build nice things here, pretty things.
Could I bother you to state your name and where you live?
Yeah, Sarah Santatoro. I live here in Simi.
Thank you.
Lived here since 97. We build box buildings. We build warehouse buildings. We build strip malls. We build ugly buildings. And we have a nice town. We should build nice things, things that are nice to look at and be with and be proud of. This is, I'm sorry, but this is an ugly building. It's another ugly building. And we're actively building another ugly building. And it's just painful to watch go up. And I wish we wouldn't do it. I mean, can't we make some kind of facade for this to make it look like something that we want to look at and we want our city to look like for the future? I mean, a facade can't cost that much more. I really want a city to be proud of, because I'm not proud of what our city looks like. And I think we have a city that we should want to be proud of. And I don't want to take a lot of your time, but I just couldn't go home tonight without having said it.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak? Okay, staff, do you want to respond to any of the, you're a little out of order, but you're more than welcome to respond.
Okay.
Okay, let's, I'm kind of a little confused here myself, but we'll go ahead with... The hearing is closed as far as the public part of it. Now, let's go with the council. We'll make our comments and allow the applicant to respond to our comments. We all haven't made our comments. So I think you've made yours. Am I correct? Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. The attorney says, would you like to rebut the public comment?
No, please.
Okay, thank you. So there. Okay. Elaine, any comments?
I will say that, that I think that this building absolutely fits the zoning that's surrounding it. It is actually quite commendable that it was unanimously approved by the neighborhood council and unanimously approved by the planning commission. And I appreciate the comments of the woman who came forward. And I'm reminded that, that people have different perceptions of beauty and what is attractive. And personally, I find that an attractive building, but I realize that you have built many beautiful things and that it will be, I know it'll be attractive. With regards to the sidewalk, I was, in fact, I got honked it. I wanted to get out and climb and walk it, I'll be very honest. I drove there and parked in the middle of the road. And I was not very safe, as I was trying to take pictures, so I, your pictures were much, much better than mine. I did find it, and that's why I was curious, I didn't quite understand, that your, part of your property encompassed that guard rail there. I did find, as I looked at what was around it, that a sidewalk seemed more of a hazard than a potential benefit for further development around, around that site. Particularly because to the, to the east, you have an industrial condo building that is clearly in place and will not be changing without sidewalk. And then to your west is the problems, as we've discussed. So I, my, my thoughts are that I would certainly be in favor of this development and I would go for probably the third, a third choice, which would be not requiring a sidewalk. Although I very much appreciate the mayor's, the mayor's recommendation that if building did come about, that it be made as a conditional development down the road. If somehow there was a way to continue that sidewalk, so it became safe and used for good travel. So my thoughts.
Okay. Councilmember Judge? Okay, my turn or DeeDee, are you done?
I tend to agree with councilmember Littster. It does seem not quite right to put a sidewalk there if it's going to end and there's nowhere else to go. I do understand the exercise part of it. If that property to the west was more buildable at some point, I think it would make a little bit more sense. But there's not going to be anything built there and to put a sidewalk there just for that little bit to get people down there when the other side of the street, we have a perfectly good sidewalk. I don't think it's necessarily worthwhile for the builder to do that. I do like the project. I think you've done a very nice job. The entryway is very nice. It's going to break, gives us some nice foliage and some nice landscaping. And you come down and the two buildings are there. They look nice mirrored. I like that. I like the covering on the back, so that you'll, even from the backside, it will still be an attractive building. Whether we want to add the part that the mayor said about possibly in the future, if it were to build out, then to put a sidewalk all the way down, I wouldn't be opposed to that. But I don't know that it's something we have to put in there right now. So those are my comments.
Okay, it's my turn. I have this extremely strong belief that we are here to serve the applicants, whether it be they're already in business or they're developing. And we are not here to spend their money regardless if it's Apple or some huge organization. We are here to get them through the process fairly and we're not here to spend their money. I look at the sidewalk as, number one, a safety hazard. I've been down that. I've walked from the location, actually a little bit west or east of the location where those condos are. I've walked all the way to Jack in the Box. You can't walk through that area. It's not going to be even a sidewalk put in there because of the, what the applicant said. There would have to be retaining walls that would be huge. And maybe the road widened somehow. It would just, it'd be a nightmare. It's, in my opinion, it's simply not going to happen. In addition to that, let's say it did happen, walking there with the speeding traffic that's going on there and with no services on that side of the road, what you're going to do is encourage jaywalking. Any children that walk that street, they're going to decide, hey, I got to get to the other side to go over where the hotel and the coffee shops and those things are. And they're going to be crossing illegally in an extremely, what I would consider, dangerous area of our city as far as speed goes. So then, you know, at what time do we have skateboarders? We do have areas where we have extremely narrow sidewalks right next to the traffic lane and we've had fatalities. And it's based on, not this city's design, it was back in the county days. And why build something that could encourage that type of happening? As far as exercise goes, he's got a parking lot with 100 and some car places. I could walk in circles there all day long and get exercise, if that's what it amounts to. So I don't think we have to ask a developer to put in a sidewalk for the purpose of exercise. If we want that, let's put in a track with the proper surface and do that. Anybody that works in those two buildings that's being constructed will either, if they walk to go get their refreshments, they'll go directly across the street, in my opinion. And most likely, they'll end up driving to where, or they bring their lunch and what have you, or there'll be refreshments at their location. So I'm just, I want to be a good neighbor. I don't want to have them build something that's not going to be proper. And I don't care how much money this gentleman has. I, it's not my job to spend his money on useless items. And so therefore, I am strongly in favor of, at the most, asking that if for some reason, somebody comes in and decides they're going to put an exercise sidewalk down the street from him, then we would ask him to, to finish it. But with the building to the west not going to do it and the bill, or the area to the east not capable of handling it, why would we do that? So those are, I do have one question for staff that's a completely different subject. I read where it was determined that there could be no signage on the back of the building, and could you just explain why that was?
That came at the planning commission meeting. It was a concern of one of the planning commissioners that they thought that could occur, so they added a condition of approval to deter that from happening. But, you know, I don't, we haven't even looked at signage at this point, or have identified any tenants in the other building. So we have, the goal here is to, you know, keep it, keep it clean and probably have a monument sign up front.
Okay, so no particular reason other than to, like the lady said, she wants to beautify the valley as much as we can, so. And by the way, I'm very proud of Simi Valley, so. All of it. I've lived here all my life. I love this valley. Okay. Time for a motion.
I move that we introduce an ordinance, page 11, approving specific plan amendment, number SPS 7 and number 27, and zone change number ZS 742. Adopt a resolution, page 18, approving general plan amendment, number GPA 102, conditional use permit number CUPS 823, with a modification to remove condition B 15 and approve the project's mitigated negative declaration.
Second. Motion second. Call for the vote.
Motion passes with councilmember Luvenos voting no.
Thank you.
All right, moving on. Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, the next item on the agenda is item five, public statements. The time allotted for comments on all items other than public hearings, appointments or certain committee informational reports. Can we read a statement, please, regarding agenda item two, public statements? This is the time for public statements. During this time, there are only comments related to matters regarding agenda item three for appointments. Certain, excuse me, I'm reading the wrong one. Let me move on. Agenda item five, clerk will read. This is the time for public statements or comments related to all matters concerning other than public hearings, appointments, special presentations or informational reports. Speakers will be called in the order in which their card was submitted and you will have three minutes to speak. When the yellow light comes on, you will have 30 seconds to conclude their, your comments. City council members cannot respond to your questions during this... City council members cannot respond to your questions during this time. However, they may offer a response to the extent possible under agenda item 5A. Please listen carefully for your name to be called. Speakers will be called by groups of three. The first speaker we have tonight, Maggie Compton. The next, Jody Cooper. Then Scott Fitzgerald.
I appreciate that. Hello. I apologize. I'm going to speak fast because I have a lot to say today. Thank you for acknowledging arc of Ventura's anniversary and many accomplishments in addition to recognizing Women's Equality Day. Some of you know that I'm involved in advocating for and enriching the lives, for and enriching the lives of people with disabilities and certain illnesses. I've been involved with disabled rights and support services since at least the 90s, when my husband and I had a secret custody of and eventually adopt our two nieces who have developmental disabilities and their brother. Now, our youngest son also has special needs and he plays on a disabled hockey team called the California Condors, which is based in Simi. I'm here for a couple reasons today. First, to ask for support for you, from you, for the Condors. Our city should be very proud of our team, which is actually very well-known as a first of its kind in California. In fact, they're considered a very successful prototype for starting many other disabled hockey teams in California and beyond. Our board members include hockey Hall of Famer and Simi Valley resident Bob Miller and retired LAPD Assistant Chief, Police Chief Gascon. Earlier this year, we had a very important fundraising event in Simi, which also honored Bob Miller. And for several weeks, my husband and I repeatedly reached out to Mayor Keith in an attempt to ask for support from him and the council in order, in addition to inviting you all to attend. I didn't know the protocol for doing it, so I tried to get a hold of Keith. Unfortunately, we never received any responses at all. So I am here today to publicly ask you all for better support for the Condors. A few years ago, both Keith and Mike, and also former mayor, he were graciously attended the Condors 10th anniversary event. So we were very surprised, to say the very least, when our recent messages were ignored. As an engaged constituent, this is just one issue, though, that's very important to me. And I strongly feel that nonpartisan real issues like this are what you should all support and work on, instead of all the dysfunctional partisan bickering that unfortunately we've all been subjected to the past few months. This leads to my next concern, which is that it appears to me as a constituent that these recent issues branched out involving Ruth, branched out to being inappropriately handled online in social forums, mostly viciously attacking Ruth and encouraging violent and insulting behavior. I have screenshots and can send them to you all if you'd like. And corrosive comments directed towards her and anyone that supports her. This should be professionally handled within the confines of City Hall in a timely, respectful, and appropriate manner, not on Facebook, using unilateral, online he-said, she-said statements, comments, and reports. Our city council must be impartial, professional, and representative of our entire city, entire city, and encourage citizen engagement instead of promoting exclusion, hatred, violence, and inappropriate and insulting behavior. I strongly implore you to professionally accept differences in opinions and to find a way to move forward in a more constructive manner, instead of wasting so much time in dysfunctional energy.
Making your time stop.
Okay. I just want to say thank you, and I want to be proud of our city. I have more to say, but I ran out of time. Thank you so much.
And so very quickly, I apologize. I don't know what happened, but excuses don't make a thing. I apologize. And I won't let that happen again.
My name's Jody Cooper, and this is my first time coming to the mic at a meeting. And I've sat here and I've listened and I've watched, and I'm on Facebook and I'm reading a lot of things. And the things that I'm hearing and seeing just bring tears to my eyes. I moved here because I wanted my kids to be in an environment where they felt safe. I'm seeing anti-Semitic rants on Facebook that just kill me. And it's spurred on by all this negativity that's going on in this city. And I can't sit back and not say anything. I can't sit back and watch Ruth being lambasted in the press. The things that are said... City council, you guys should be a cohesive group. You should be supporting one another. You should be saying that everybody has differences. Everybody's going to have different opinions. And everybody has the right to different opinions. I'm not saying that people can't think the way they want to think. We all have the right to do that. That's our right by living here in the United States. But I'm really disheartened by what I see and what I hear, and I just couldn't sit back any longer and not say anything. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am, could you tell us where you reside?
Well, according to the Brown Act, I don't need to tell you that.
No, you're absolutely right. You're absolutely right.
But I will say to you that I did in my statement say, I moved here because I wanted to. So therefore, you know where I live. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Hi. My name is Scott Fitzgerald. This is my first time speaking here. This is in regards to the July 26 statement in the Acorn regarding the chief trying to press the issue for the chest cams. On June 2, at the Simi Valley Town Center, there was a very bad incident that went on with a 13-year-old victim and me also, that's my son. And I had my chest cam going clear as day. And the way the officer acted was very horribly and wrong. And I have some statements I would like to pass to you. I do want to say the chief and the deputy chief of police pulled me into a meeting immediately. They are excellent people. I've had multiple meetings with the city manager. He is great. And for you guys to say in the Acorn that there's not been enough complaints to get the chest cams, it's because there's a lot of officers that falsify and fabricate. And when you watch this thumb drive, I'll give it to you, the mayor, and you read these complaints, you will know. You guys need to get the chest cams to protect the community. I'm here to speak for the potential victims, okay? I'm not going to put up with this for another second. You guys are the only city in Ventura County that does not have chest cams. Get your chest cams so the officers can be held responsible for their actions. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. And sure, I don't know if I asked you, and I apologize if I did, but could you tell us where you live?
I live here in Simi Valley. And I just once again want to thank the chief for pulling me in and personally apologizing for the wrongdoing of the officer and the deputy chief. And Brian, too. He's been excellent. I've been in... They have all been excellent in trying to get in. And I'm here to back the chief up on this. Get the chest cams. Our community needs it to protect the kids. There were 13 kids there. Those kids are scared. My son says, Dad, what am I supposed to do if somebody's trying to kidnap me? I got to call and ask for the sheriffs because the police have an issue with me. It is horrible. Wait till you watch that thumb drive.
Thank you.
All right. Our next three speakers, Patricia Malkreek, Rita Henry, John Lapper.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Patricia Malkak, and I am here tonight to speak as an educator. I thank you for this opportunity. And as an educator, just so you know a little bit about me, I'm a Ventura County resident. I have been in education for 45 years. Started out as a US history teacher in Nendicott, New York. I went on to be a high school counselor in Charlotte Mecklenburg Schools in North Carolina, went on to be a graduate counselor at Wake Forest University, and then finished out my career as a high school counselor in South Carolina. And being that we're at the start of the school year, and I looked at the way some of our meetings are going, I think it's important that I try to get you to see at least two of the experiences I have had as an educator, to help you visualize and understand what our students go through every day at school. I want to bring to you one experience that I had a few years ago with Homeland Security ICE officials. I was in my office as a high school counselor when two gentlemen arrived in my office unannounced. They had not been honest with our high school receptionist and came into my office under different terms. They set their papers down, told me they needed the records of nine students of my students. All they showed me was their documents representing them. I informed those gentlemen that I would lose title funding from the federal government for our school if I released student records to anybody other than a parent or guardian with a picture ID. They were not happy with that information and again, were aggressive with me and spoke with me in a very underhandedly manner. I contacted our resource officer, who is a county sheriff, who came in and had to escort them out of my office. Now, me, as an adult woman with many years of experience dealing with irate parents, upset students, this meeting left me unhinged. And I sat there and thought, if I am moved by this meeting and feeling uncertain, what would one of my 14-year-old female students feel like if she was treated like that by those two gentlemen? And then my second experience was with a student I had had for four years. He was in my alphabet. And he was a fine young man. He was an undocumented student. This was in 2015. I had him start as a freshman. He was carrying a 3.75 GPA when he graduated. And he was very strong in language arts, and he happened to be a great football player. In his junior year, I started getting recruited from many fine colleges in North Carolina, South Carolina, and Virginia. He had his choice, but he was a dreamer. So it took a lot of work.
Ma'am, your time is up. I'm sorry. Your time is up.
I'm going to finish this. Because I think it's important, Mayor, that you put yourself and that 20-year-old young man who was denied in his junior year of college...
Ma'am, your time is up. Could you turn off the speakers?
I am sorry, it is. But this person was removed from Campbell University because of the Dreamer program was canceled by the current administration. You didn't have to see him. I did. He came and looked at me crying and saying, what am I to do? Okay. Ruth, continue what you're doing. You are helping our students every single day. They need that help. And you are... And so, Mayor, we can hand that to the mayor. I, being a teacher, I just want to take you to school.
My name is Rita Henry. And I'm here to comment also, first of all, I need to brag, I'm a 46-year teacher. I just retired. And I've also experienced the fear that students have. But the thing I want to talk about the most is when I worked with students of ages preschool through high school, I used to tell them, you can disagree, you don't have to like, but you have to be respectful. And that's what has made me sad and embarrassed about the Simi City Council procedure. I think you can agree to disagree and still be respectful and set the tone. I like the way you set the tone at the beginning of the meeting on the 29th about keep your signs down and be respectful. But I think we need to carry that in all our affairs. I think it's very sad that Councilwoman Luvenos would feel feared, that there would be people in the city who think, yeah, we'll just call her up and threaten her. So you guys are the leaders here. And like I used to tell my students and my own children and my ex-husband, we can agree to disagree, but we need to be respectful while we do that. No one should live in fear because of their views. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am, could you tell us where you reside? And you're not...
I'm in a very luxurious home in Simi Valley.
All right. Good for you.
That I bought on my teacher income.
John Lapper, Simi Valley.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor Mashburn and fellow City Council people of Simi Valley. Tonight, I would like to discuss the format used to allow public comments at our City Council meetings. I believe it is some form of the Brown Act. My disappointment is in a system that allows a duly-elected councilperson to be lambasted for three minutes at a time for hours with no chance to challenge a speaker. And at the end of hours of people hurling innuendos, the councilperson gets 90 seconds to respond. And in the past meetings, it would appear that only the mayor has been allowed to challenge a speaker. Last council meeting, we were made aware of Councilwoman Ruth Luvenos of repeated attempts to have the city manager or city council have the matter addressed by committee or as an agenda item to organize a better format for this type of exchange. How many years, how many months has it been since this request has been ignored? At the last council meeting, Mayor Mashburn gave the excuse that the city is very busy and it hurts their morale when you place such burdens on them. He cited an example that in his years of being on the council, he has had several issues that never made it on the agenda. I believe it is wrong to ignore this request, to research and come up with a fair system for public comments that both protects the integrity of our system and, more importantly, protects a duly-elected official from vitriol language without a fair response. It is ironic that in the year I was born, in 1953, Governor Earl Warren signed into law the Brown Act. One topic is achieving balance. There must be an adequate notice of what discussion and action is to occur during a meeting, as well as a normal degree of spontaneity in the dialogue between an elected official and their constituents. I would ask that a committee of City Council people, constituents, staff, and the city attorney be appointed to explore a fair and equitable system for an agenda item placement and the public comment portion of the council meeting. Lastly, I will ask once again that the City Council not move forward on Mike Judge's censure request, refrain from in any way supporting the costly recall Ruth campaign, and get on with the business of governing Simi Valley. Two areas of interest are the City Council reporting to the community how the new California gas tax revenue is being allocated in Simi Valley. Is the City Council ensuring we get our fair share? What projects are happening with the extra tax revenue? That would be much more valuable than the Mike Judge's NEXIL report or the Vallarta investigation. The second area of interest for a future agenda discussion in Simi Valley is Simi Valley Police Chief Livingston's desire to have body cams for his officers. Where is the city with that discussion? I only know Mike Judge is against it. How about the rest of the council? Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker we have is Ronnie Miranda, Jenny Knack, and Lori Sheridan.
Hello. Really glad this adjusts because I'm small. I have so many feelings about what's been going on in the chamber, in the council chambers. Excuse me?
Give your name and if you choose where you reside.
I'm glad you asked because I'm going to refuse to do that. And I've circled this and given you an underline where it says you should respect my right to do that. So I'll leave that here.
I do respect your right. I just said, thank you.
Why do you always ask? I don't understand why you always ask. Because it's like, can I have the time reset?
Yes, you can have the timing reset.
Thank you.
And the reason I ask is...
Okay, so many... Oh, we're still eating my time.
Wait a minute. You asked a question, and I'll answer it. The reason I ask is because I want to treat everybody equally. So if I ask everybody, then I'm treating everybody equally. I ask people that I know where they live.
If you don't ask, it's equal, too.
But I don't know that these... Do you want to let me finish? I let these folks know and the rest of the room know. That's it. No big deal. And if you don't want to, that's fine. We respect that.
Well, that goes both ways. If you don't ask, it's also giving everybody a level... If you don't ask, it's also giving everybody a level field, so. Can I go now? All right, I'm ready.
We're going to set the timer. On your mark, just set.
Thank you. It's gone. Okay. All right. I have so many feelings. As you can imagine, I've been to a couple of your meetings. The first one had me thunderstruck with the vitrally ramblings of people that were filled with so much hate and bigotry, the Trump train. They were literally giggling. Every time there was a guy up here talking about a development, every time they said "train," or, excuse me, "wall," they're giggling like schoolchildren. It was idiotic. They were hateful. They were intimidating. That's why I did not come up here and speak. You had every cop. It seemed like the walls were climbed crawling with them. And they did have to intervene because it was so intimidating. And this all came about because one of your council members chose to advise a marginalized people of their rights. There was nothing about lawlessness. There was nothing about breaking the law about your rights. The same message that came from Gavin Newsom, Garcetti, LA law enforcement, Oakland law enforcement, many people throughout the state offered the same advice as far as what your rights were when ICE came to the door. And because that happened here, I don't know why, I don't know what the formula is, but the circus that came into town was unbelievable. And I would be embarrassed to have that in our council chambers where I'm from. It's not dignified, it's not fair, and it's not in line with the spirit of free speech. We are a civilization, and to shut someone down because they spoke up for marginalized people in line with our other state leaders, that is not the spirit of free speech. That is intimidation, and that is harassment. I was sitting over there, and I was invited to leave, to go back where I came from. I know what it meant. There was no ugly words attached to that, but he's talking to me because I'm a Brown girl. And I didn't like that he was on the Trump train, and he was intimidating my friend. It was unbelievable. I hope that you continue to offer a little extra protection to your fellow council member, Ruth Luvenos, that she has some protection because the tone of comments, the spirit of what they were saying was very harmful, not to mention the direct threats that have been thrown around. And maybe they've gone away now because people shut them down. Cockroaches go into the baseboards. Keep the light on, all right? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Jenny Nack, Simi Valley. Just to get it out of the way, no to a censure of Councilwoman Luvenos, no to a recall of Councilwoman Luvenos. That is my opinion and my wish. Many, many people voted for a person who shared their values and who promised to fight alongside them for progress on a variety of fronts. There are so many of us who desperately feel that it's imperative that we have someone who represents us. When I moved to Simi last year, I quickly learned about the SSFL and got swept up in the fight for 100% cleanup. Councilwoman Luvenos is the only council member that I have seen attend an LA City Council meeting to advocate for LA to approve funding for possible litigation if the polluters successfully break their cleanup agreements. Councilwoman Luvenos is the only council member that I've seen at a water board meeting advocating on behalf of our city to another board that makes many decisions that affect the cleanup, water pollution permits, fines for exceedances. This year after the Woolsey fire, we had a record number of exceedances come off the Hill, 57. That's more than we've had in almost a decade. In addition to that, you add another fact, which is Golden State Water is now admitting that they use maybe up to 67% groundwater for their residential drinking water. Last year, they said 17%. So those numbers have changed. In the same time, we have more pollution coming off the Hill. I don't see anyone except for her addressing it. Councilwoman Luvenos is the only council member that joined community members protesting Boeing led hikes up at SSFL this spring as the polluter appropriately failed to let the people know that they invited up there about the contamination they were being exposed to because it was part of their greenwashing campaign. She was the only person up there with us. Councilwoman Luvenos is the only Simi Valley City Council member that joined over 100 community members, families, children who attended Lemon Park to commemorate the 60 year of the sodium reactor experiment meltdown. This is just one issue that she's championing. She's championing many, many other issues, as we all know, that affect many other groups and residents. Many of these people feel that they previously lacked representation on this council. That's why so many of us voted her in, and it's our right to be represented. Now, I feel this is an immense desire to ensure that she has people up there on that dais who will let her voice be heard, not always wait for opportunities to silence her. And if this council is so polarized that it refuses to allow voices that differ from theirs to be heard, then we need a change of composition of the council so to one that's more tolerant and inclusive.
Thank you.
I'm Lori Sheridan. Sorry, excuse me. I'm Lori Sheridan. I'm a 25-year resident. I spoke before you two weeks ago and asked you to lead by example, to treat people living in our city and each other with empathy and respect. I was barely out of the room before Councilmember Judge asked to pursue censure. Now I'm here to ask, what exactly are your objections to that video? Is it that she used her platform as a city official to tell both legal and undocumented immigrants their rights? Disliking the fact that both groups have rights doesn't make it untrue. There are multiple elected city officials across the country, both Democrat and Republican, who have provided the same information to their constituents while acting in their official capacity. There are no censures. There are no recalls. Councilmember Luvenos should not have to apologize for telling Simi residents their rights from her position as an elected official. I would argue it's actually her sworn duty. Is your objection to the video her use of the words "concentration camp"? I'm a Jew in a city where I've been called a kike, and my children were laughed at during Holocaust study and history class. I don't need or want you to speak for me. The description is correct. The U.S. Holocaust Museum partly defines concentration camps as a site independent of any judicial sentence or even indictment for the detention of civilians whom a regime perceives to be a security risk of some sort. Auschwitz adds that they lack proper clothes, rest, and medical care, and have poor sanitary conditions and insufficient living conditions. The conditions in our camps described by visiting human rights advocates, U.S. congressional representatives, and senators, and the detainees themselves meet this description. Just because you don't like what you hear or don't believe it doesn't make it less true. Belief does not negate fact. Jews protested these camps in 20 different cities last weekend. Where were you? If you ever wondered what you do in 1930s Germany, you're doing it right now. So please don't speak for me or appropriate my history to advance your agenda. Is your objection to the flag hanging in her office? What is hanging in her office is shrapé, not an American flag. It's a piece of art that honors her heritage. If you're so concerned about who's honoring the flag, I wonder which of you has worn a flag on your bandana, your shirt, your bathing suit, or your hat, or has a flag flying from your truck that you don't either illuminate or properly fold and stow at night? All of those violate the flag code. Or is your objection that her video addressed issues that make you uncomfortable and brought a horde of racists out of the woodwork and into the spotlight, casting a shadow over our city? Sadly, Simi is getting a reputation as a home for intolerance and racism, and that is happening because you, the City Council, allow it. And in many cases, some of you stoke those fires, both on social media and from right here on this dais. It's time to stop this and to get on with the city business that you were all elected to conduct.
Thank you.
Okay. This evening, our next speaker. Our next speaker is Nicole Moore. Michael Brown, Teresa Elms.
Hi. I'm a Simi native. I've spoken here many times before, and I'm now living in San Fernando, where we bought a home last month, partially because we cannot afford homes here, and also because of the atmosphere in this city is no longer to my liking. My family and I, however, are still heavily involved in Simi Valley, particularly in the arts community. I want to talk about something that happened while I was in high school. In October 1998, I was a 10th grader at Royal High School when Matthew Shepard was brutally murdered for being gay. Although it was far away in Laramie, Wyoming, I had a lot of gay friends, and so at the time, as a teenager, it felt very close to home. The murderers even admitted that they killed him for being gay and attempted to use gay panic defense. It impacted my view on the world profoundly. This fall, the Arts and Literature in Action Group here in Simi Valley has a project coming. It is Laramie Project. There's a quote from the play. In the beginning, a man says, "You know, we used to be a tiny little town." I'm paraphrasing. He used to say, "We used to be a tiny little town that nobody knew of, but now, now we're a name associated with a crime." We all know what that was like. I grew up knowing what it was like to be a city associated with a crime, and I hope that we no longer have to be a city associated with something hateful or racist. We don't want to be that city. There's a group of LGBTQ teens and allies producing this play, Laramie Project. It shows what happens when you let hate fester, as some of the members of the city seem to be doing in their ludicrous focus on Councilmember Luvenos' defensive immigrants. Councilmember Judge and Mayor Mashburn, I believe both of you are still on the Arts Commission. I hope that you will please attend Laramie Project. I would like to give you the dates. I will say them now, so they're for the record. It is September 27th, 28th, and 29th at 8:00 p.m. on Friday and Saturday and 2:00 o'clock on Sunday. It is also October 4th, October 5th, and October 6th, same times, Friday and Saturday 8 and Sunday at 2:00. Tickets are only $14, but I think somehow as members of the Arts Commission, you probably get comp tickets. It's at the Black Box Theater, which is on School Street. I really do hope that you'll attend. I also want to point out that October 6th is the anniversary of Matthew Shepard's death. And I want to thank Councilmember Luvenos for taking the step to make the Pride Declaration in Simi in June. I think it's a really nice step in the right direction. When I lived here in Simi Valley, as the mother of a gay child, I attempted to join a P-Fly group, and we didn't have one. So I joined one in Santa Clarita, and I have found our home in the arts community here, but I hope that we do more because I think we need to. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Michael Brown, 52-year resident, Simi Valley, currently retired from the city of Los Angeles. Okay. Living in the home that I grew up in. SB 1, that was Governor Brown's other gift to us, basically raising our gas tax. How many times have you sat there at a pump, looking at the pump going, gee, 18 cents a gallon for federal, 18 cents a gallon for local? But all that money, it's all tied up in the general fund. So we're relying on a 5.6 tax increase on per gallon of gas to repave our streets. That could take up to the next 10 years. I met Brian. I spoke with Brian Thursday. We currently do have gas tax fund money coming to repave some of the cul-de-sacs within Simi. We currently have had some used previously. We currently have a rehabilitation project going up on Cochrane between Sequoia and Sycamore. Losing my train of thought here, I'm just trying to get all this in before my three minutes expires. Oh, yeah, by the way, Madera and Los Angeles Avenue. I deemed that the Frankenstein street because you see how the new is Frankensteined in with the old. And Item 4A, Cochrane, was another street that's been heavily torn up. Basically, do we have 10 years to wait on some of these streets? And I understand that when you get state and federal funding, you have to use it certain spots. So maybe down the road in the future, maybe if we can get creative and say, hey, you know what, maybe we can use this money over here, or maybe we can use this money over there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. My name is Teresa Elms, and I'm a Simi Valley resident, homeowner, and taxpayer. And I would like to remind everyone in this room that there's a reason that free people consent to pay taxes. And that reason is we expect in return that our government will provide fair, even-handed justice regardless of wealth or station, defending the weak against the strong and the small against the great. That is the primary duty of government and of this council. And I'm proud to see that a member of this council is standing up for justice and is doing what is right, and that's Councilmember Ruth Luvenos. There may be folks in this room who remember a bit of panic by the Tea Party a few years ago about FEMA camps. Anybody remember FEMA camps? The government, federal government in particular, was going to send troops and round up people they didn't like and throw them all into concentration camps. No warrants, just an executive branch piece of paper, no due process of law, no legal recourse to fight back, no fixed duration of incarceration, just indefinite concentration camp. The government was going to throw away the Constitution and what it says about unreasonable search and seizure. And back then, the MAGA people, the people who later became MAGA hatters, they swore to defend the Constitution. Those people swore to resist, to oppose government abuse of power, and that's what their guns were for. They were there to defend the weak, defend the people against the strong, and against the overreach of government. Where are those people now? We are there. The FEMA camps are being staffed by different people of a slightly different complexion. The FEMA people, the people who were opposed to FEMA camps foresaw it, but they're nowhere to be seen. When they do poke their heads up, they're chanting meaningless MAGA memes. The government is rounding up working people, devout Christian people, and throwing them into concentration camps on the border without due process of law. But Team MAGA stands on the sidewalk and does nothing. Are the victims of injustice too poor to deserve justice? Is that what it is? Is their status too low to deserve attention or pity? Are they too brown? Or are they just not members of the right club? In the Bible, St. Paul reminds the Christians living in Corinth to recall the time of their calling to Christianity. "Not many of you were wise," he said. "Not many of you were powerful. Not many of you were of noble birth. But God chose the weak things of the world to shame the strong. He chose the lowly and despised and the things that are not, the things that are not citizens, for example, not Roman citizens, not American citizens."
Ma'am, your time is up now.
He chosen to shame the things that are. So you know my point. I think, just one last thing, I think that Jesus would say to Councilmember Luvenos, "Well done, my good and faithful servant."
Time's up.
The next three speakers, Marie Garside, Jorge Garcia, and Judy Meyer.
Hi. I wanted to thank the council for honoring Women's Equality Day and the four organizations that do a lot for women. American Association of University Women, League of Women Voters, Simi Valley Women's Club, and Ventura County Women's Political Council. Thank you. And we have a part two, which is going to start with a quote from one of my favorite famous women. "If they don't give you a seat at the table, bring a folding chair." Shirley Chisholm. I would like to ask the council to make a concerted effort to have a more inclusive, diverse population on our commissions, councils, and boards. Do some outreach. Find our diverse population- The next three speakers, Marie Garside, Jorge Garcia, and Judy Mayer.
Hi. I wanted to thank the council for honoring Women's Equality Day and the four organizations that do a lot for women. American Association of University Women, League of Women Voters, Simi Valley Women's Club, and Ventura County Women's Political Council. Thank you. We have part two, which is going to start with a quote from one of my favorite famous women. "If they don't give you a seat at the table, bring a folding chair." Shirley Chisholm. I would like to ask the council to make a concerted effort to have a more inclusive, diverse population on our commissions, councils, and boards. Do some outreach. Find our diverse population and enfranchise them and engage them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would you tell us where you reside if you choose?
I choose not to.
Okay, that's great. Thank you.
And you know, I'm always tempted coming up here abusing the old Roman greeting of "Patres conscripti." And what it meant was that people were drafted, conscripted, to serve the public. And that was supposedly the introductory salutation in the Roman Senate in the days of the Roman Republic. And now, of course, we wouldn't say just conscripted fathers, but conscripted mothers and fathers. It's interesting to see the way we hear, you know, sometimes we forget about that we're involved in a process of trying to deal with Simi and the issues here and how it's part of a much greater, longer historical process. Women's Equality Day. We're not there yet, but this is something that has been part of the history. We start with the Declaration of Independence that says, "All are created equal," and we still haven't figured out what the heck that means. We don't know who's included in all. We argue about created and equal, who knows? We've still got to figure that out. But that is a long process and it's got a lot of desviaciones, detours, and bumps in the road and talk about potholes in the road. This road has many. We all know, at least in many history courses, they talk about how Abigail Adams told her husband John when they're going off to write the Constitution about 20 years after beginning this experiment, she says, "Don't forget the ladies," and we know they promptly did. There's no mention in there. And the question of who gets to vote was to be left up to the individual 13 previous colonies, now states. And six of them chose to put in religious qualifications and many of them had property qualifications. And one outlier, New Jersey, talked about giving women the vote. And the other 12 said, "You got to be kidding. Do you know the mischief you're going to create?" And every step of the way, for about 120 years, you know, 135 years actually, you know, getting to that, you know, women's being finally recognized as fully human and political participants, right? Every step of the way, there's fighting, no mischief. What good would it do? Women will just follow their husbands' wills. So you know, you're just duplicating the numbers, but you're not changing anything. Well, we know there can be some significant differences when women are involved in the decision-making process. Tremendous differences. And we need that perspective. And we're part of that process here in Simi Valley. And it's a hard, long, and sometimes nasty process.
Thank you. Would you, I'm going to ask, because of the consistency, would you mind saying where you reside and if you don't want to?
No, no problem. November 11th, 1975, moved from East LA, which became an issue with some people when we moved there. Yes, oh yes. There's a family coming from East LA into the neighborhood. And we're now in our third home over near the Justin Early Education Center.
Great, thank you.
I'm from East LA, I was born there. Okay? And then the valley, and then here, after Tennessee. My name is Judy Mayer and thank you for the opportunity to speak. I live in Simi Valley. I love this place. And I'm speaking for myself, not as a member of Neighborhood Council. The family's still here, she's about to know that. A few weeks ago, there was a big topic of discussion for senior housing development. I think it was on a big hill or something like that. And many people had opinions about the development. Some of the comments were about the noise from ambulances going past their houses at all hours. And a few weeks later, I went out to check out a property considered for development in NC2, Neighborhood Council 2. The project was going to be brought to us for consideration. I was surprised, actually really shocked, that there was a piece of land that big that's available for being built on. And it's a housing project right near the railroad tracks, if you've seen that yet. I remember the comment about the noise level at the city hall meeting and I had concerns about the noise level for the new homes. Well, as I walked back to my car, I noticed a couple from a nearby home that sat in their converted garage, you know, they're all over Simi, they're converted garages into dens. It's like when we lived in Tennessee, they had big porches. Well, this is the southern porch here. And yeah, it is. They were enjoying a nice evening and I struck up a conversation with them about the possible project. At one point, I asked about the noise from the train and they said they don't hear it. They don't hear it, okay? And we had somebody else come to the Neighborhood Council meeting and they said they didn't hear it. They said, "We have newer windows which block out the noise," and they got used to the noise after, if there was any remaining. We also have friends who lived practically under the 118. When we were outside, when they're outside, when we were outside with them, we asked about the highway noise and the kids said they got used to it. We got upgraded windows right after we moved into our new house. We weren't planning to, but we have very noisy neighbors. He's like, he's got a flagpole that draws everybody to the flagpole. So he's, that's just the way it is, okay? At our last city council meeting, David Maron shared the data that our population is aging. We're going to need assisted living and retirement homes. We're going to need more care, as much as I hate to say that, and need those projects to be built. I want to stay in Simi. My final resting place is in Simi, but I want to stay here in the interim, you know? And so I'm hoping those places will be built. So I have, I think one question that could be asked to people complaining about noise and ambulances and stuff like that, what kind of windows do you have? Maybe it's time you upgraded the windows and wear earplugs or something like that. We need these homes here. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next three speakers I have is, actually this speaker card does not have a check whether to speak or not, and her name is Sheila Hoffos. Would you like to speak? Okay. Following is Frank Spicati. And next is Sherri McGilvray.
Good evening. My name is Sheila Hoppus. I've been a resident of Simi Valley for 25 years.
Thank you.
And I'd like to talk about something that happened a few weeks ago that I'd like, an action from you on this. Saturday before last, I attended the Ventura County Pride Festival with my daughter. She is a young teenager and she had just come out and it was her first pride event after doing so. And we didn't know what to expect. We came, we went to the, we had no idea what was going to happen, but when we came out there, we found an event that was so joyful and so impactful to her and it was wonderful. And it overwhelmed me, I'm sorry. I was overwhelmed at how happy I meet her. And while we were there, one of the highlights was that she got to meet with and listen to Councilmember Louvenos speak. And she gave us, gave the crowd a message of fellowship and inclusion and support. And that meant a lot to my daughter because sometimes in Simi Valley, it's not the easiest thing to be a young gay teenager, you know? And I want to thank you for that. It meant a lot to both of us. But what I wanted to talk about mostly was that, as I said, it's not easy to be a teenager that is on the LGBT. They often feel disenfranchised and isolated. And in fact, LGBT youth are eight times more likely to commit suicide and 30% more likely than their peers to have major depression. But there is something that can be done, a little thing that can be done that helps that. And that's what I saw in Ventura. And study after study shows that if you have a pride event in your community, the level of depression, the level of suicide actually can go down up to 20% in that area. And that's something that's very important. And I would like to ask that Simi Valley return to having a pride event. We had one up until 19 years ago, but we don't have them anymore. But I would ask that the council consider and support having a pride event in the city once again. The one that we had before was attended by over 10,000 people and it created tremendous positive press for the city. So please, as a mother, I ask for you and for the mothers of all people who are LGBTQ, please consider bringing back a pride festival in Simi Valley.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sherri McGilvray. I have, my husband and I about 25 years ago built that skating rink over here on Easy Street, the ice skating rink. And we used to be very involved in hockey and so on, so I've been around a long time. But I'd like to start and explain to you that I am a conservative Republican. I grew up in Umar, Arizona. My father was a police officer. All my male relatives, uncles, my uncle was a general that went to Vietnam three times, pilot. I mean, I come from a strong military patriotic background. I get chills when I hear the Star Spangled Banner. I am a patriot. Let's get that because I have led a life over the past 20 years that has tested my values and tested the way my heart was set when I was raised with Archie Bunker as my My, about 20 years ago, my husband and I had built the skating rink and unfortunately went through a divorce and lost the skate. He went, because of the 94 earthquake, the skating rink never got off the ground financially. It was a million dollars over budget. So it was just a struggle the whole time. But during my marriage, I went to school and I knew I was going to have to support myself. So here comes Miss Thousand Oaks, upper middle class, white lady going down to work down in south central LA for a pregnant teenager school and central Los Angeles for a pregnant teenager school and San Fernando, the valley. I was placed several different places. At McAllister High School, I taught young, pregnant immigrant teenagers from Mexico and Central America. My heart was won over by them and I became a staunch advocate for them. I fought for them to complete their high school and get their diplomas so they could get jobs and support their children. They shared their stories with me of how they made the dangerous passages to the United States. I have their autobiographies from years ago where they talked about nearly drowning, getting raped, and days walking through the desert to get up here. I got to know them personally. The prejudices I had been exposed to in my family upbringing were in conflict with the strong emotional bonds I felt with my students. I decided the Lord and His wisdom had put me in this situation to teach me and make me grow. I met Ruth while I was teaching at McAllister High School. I was kind of a quiet advocate for the students. She is a fiery advocate for the students. Ruth stirs the pot wherever she goes, okay? And I know it's, she was full of passion and energy and had been educated in the law. She was unstoppable. She's the one that organized. Huh?
I'm sorry, but your time is up.
Oh, okay. All right, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you Frank coming up?
Frank Spicati?
Yes.
So as a way of introduction, Sherri McGilvray is my wife. And this is very uncharacteristic of me to get in front of a group of distinguished adults. But I was, I was raised in a household with older sisters, dominarian sisters, who if I said anything, they slapped my face or told me to shut up. So I'm not really good at speaking. But I want to say that Ruth and I talked together in the same room at the pregnant teen school. And I can attest to her integrity. She's got a heart of gold for the students and she stands up for what she believes in regardless of the consequence. So those are the kinds of qualities that you find in Ruth. And I think that she will do very well with the business of the council and Simi Valley. And I certainly wish her well. And that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you live in, where do you reside, sir?
I reside in...
You don't have to answer, boy, I gotta make that very clear.
I reside up near the campus in Camarillo.
Okay.
In University Glen. Been there for 15 years.
All right. Thank you.
All right, I have two more speaker cards left. Next speaker, Michelle LaPointe and Juan Miguel.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I prefer not to say where I'm from. I have heard Councilman Judge say from this day as a number of times that if you don't like something that's being voted on to get a ballot measure, so several months ago, I researched ballot measures to an obsessive degree. Now I am researching recall measures to an equally obsessive degree. And I have learned that there are a couple of significant differences. And I would like to say what I have learned so far, let you know that I have put in a request for more information based on my research with the county and the city clerk's office and ask that when you do address this issue of what it's going to cost the city to do a recall measure, that you put it on an agenda item and make it public within this body so that the entire community can understand it. So my preliminary research shows that although there might be some discounts, if you can piggyback a recall election on some other elections, a recall election costs $300,000. If you have to do another special election, if no replacement is selected at that time, you have another $300,000. Over and above the election costs, the city of Simi Valley also, this is unlike a ballot measure, bears the full cost to the county of elections. That means legal fees, that means administration, that means overtime, that means verifying signatures, all of that. The county cannot give an accurate estimate to me as a citizen over the phone or through records. That all has to be done through a request from the city. So I would ask that when you get that information, I've put in a request for to do that today, but I would also like you to share that with the community so they know. There have been statements made online that the PAC that is raising money for the recall is going to share those with the city and pay for the cost. Well, legally, they cannot. They can only raise money for their own paid signature gatherers, their own advertising expenses, et cetera, et cetera. Once that train has led the station, there is no choice but the city must pay for it. And then the next question is going to be, what...
Thank you for allowing me, even though I tuned in the car a little bit late. I didn't know about the rules, but make sure I tune in in time next time. I'm here today to speak about public transportation routing. As a community member and member of my church, I have many senior citizens that have approached me and have some concerns about the service, either be about the routing of the buses or the, the buses or taxes, I'm not sure exactly how they call it, that they go and pick up the seniors for appointments or whatever it might be. That is not really very reliable. And sometimes, you know, they miss their doctor's appointments, so they have to go. So I really would like to ask you, you guys really look into the routing and the service that can be better provided for the citizens. Just a quick example, I have a copy of me of all the routing of all the buses and I just, first glance, I look at it. If, for instance, there is somebody that takes the bus on Sycamore and Royal and it happens to be going to Royal, to the hospital, they will be fine going there. But on their way back, they have to ride the bus about five times the distance in order for them to get back. Can you imagine a senior citizen to do that? So, you know, I have somebody that sometimes that they might go across the street, the hospital to do a blood work or anything like that. So something for you guys to consider. And as well, there is something, you know, for, for the kids that go to school, low-income kids and, you know, and the parents that also they have to go, there is a big issue. I actually met a really nice lady from adult school that she happens to be my neighbor. She works in the office in adult school and I spoke to her. She was extremely nice to me and went to the office and got me a copy of the routing and she gave it to me a little prior coming to here so I can look at it and see how it is. And she actually was telling me that there are a lot of people that go to adult school that they complain about the routing, that it's not really reliable, is not, is not easily to read it. And I don't know if there is some information that can also be provided, you know, for, for, for the people that don't speak English. I know there are some flyers I saw and in my entire life, I do provide information, me working for the school district, I kind of provide that kind of information and I never seen those flyers before. I'm happy to see that there are some of it. So I was wondering if you guys could really look into that and to better, to make a better use of those resources and if, you know, the people who work there, which is, I'm sure they're wonderful people and the drivers are wonderful people because the people who drive it, they tell me, they, you know, I'll be happy to help. I don't have experience, but I think I have some good ideas that I can contribute with it. And I do want to thank you for, for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, there are no more speaker cards.
Okay, we'll make our council comments on public statements.
I want to thank you all for coming. I know I've said this before, but I want to thank you all again for coming to engage in the democratic process. And even if you didn't agree with me, I would support you in coming to engage in the democratic process like I have before. You know, civil dialogue is the foundation of our democracy and allows us to fulfill our city mission to serve the needs of all of our residents. And you coming here and engaging this civil dialogue in this process shows that our democracy is working. So thank you for coming. I'm fully committed to being a true public servant for all of our residents. I love Simi Valley. I truly believe in being a public servant and I, I, I am saddened to hear Rita Henry say that, you know, she said, no one should live in fear because of their views, and I agree with that. And that's why I've always been open to listening to any resident, regardless of your view, whether you agree or disagree with me. And I can, will continue to promote the civil dialogue. And we have a lot of work to do in this community, from homelessness to suicide, supporting our LGBTQ youth and cleaning up the Santa Susana Field Lab. And I will continue to do that to the best of my ability and I will continue to be a public servant. So thank you.
Elaine.
I would like to just address individually some of the comments that are made, but first I'd like to commend the fifteen people that spoke that are supporting Ruth's character. I thank you for your dialogue and expressions and know that I concur that freedom of speech and expression is paramount and I believe everyone here on this council believes as such. And so we certainly support the rights of, of each of us to express opinions and should do so civilly. I wanted to specifically mention Maggie. Thank you about learning me, educate me about the California Condors and the hockey team. And we'll look forward to finding out more about future endeavors because that would be something that I'm sure we would all love to support. Scott Fitzgerald, your passion for, for body cameras for our police force, I am a proponent of that as well and have had personal experience that think that it is important as we develop that we will go forward in that direction. And I just wanted to express that as well. I wanted to thank Nicole for her passion for the arts and coming to encourage us to attend the Laramie Project. And I think, I welcome and invite all those to come and, and share different theatrical and artistic endeavors that are in our community and appreciate your telling us about that event as well. And I wanted to thank, was it Judy, for talking about senior housing in the need and wanting it to be, us to be very mindful of that. And then finally, I wanted to conclude remarks to Juan, who talked about the bus routing being more available in Spanish and some of the issues. Interesting that you should mention that because one of our consent calendar items today addresses Title VI and, and part of that is that we will have more readily route information available in, in Spanish as well as English. And so wanted you to know that you are being heard and it's being acted on later today. Those are my comments.
First, I wanted to talk about the lady that invited me to the Laramie Project. Unfortunately, I'll be taking my daughter up north for school those two weeks, so I won't be here, although I would like to go to that. To the man that was talking about the buses, on our website, there is bilingual information. And also, if you know those people you're seeing that might use dialeride, if they're senior citizens or if they're disabled, have them call our bus service, the dialeride bus service, the website has its number, and get them signed up so that they can get on that list and they'll be able to use the dialeride service.
DeeDee.
I just want to again thank everyone for being here. It's nice to hear everyone's opinions. It's also very important for you to bring the items that are important to you to us so that we can address them or we can look into them. I think all of us pretty much made notes the whole time. So just because you might not hear something right away doesn't mean we're not looking at it. I'm looking forward to the Condors and, and the Laramie Project. But then there's also some other things that we've got going on here that I think will help make this a better community for all of us. So thank you all for bringing in your special interests and making it an interest for our entire community. So thank you.
I too want to thank everybody for being here. In particular, there were several, I think, teachers and I'd like to brag that my daughter is a teacher in the district and I thank you for your service. And I'm going to embarrass someone right now. My daughter's very best instructor she had while she was in high school, I believe it is, but the lady never let her chew gum, is sitting, is sitting here tonight and an incredible math teacher. So thank you for being here. To Maggie Compton, I think Maggie was the first speaker. All I can do is offer apology. I don't know how I, I didn't connect and I'm not making excuses. That's not it at all. I'm embarrassed that it happened. But in fact, my daughter was her son's home teacher while he was struggling with an illness. And so we got to know the Comptons quite well and wonderful people, wonderful program at the ice rink and I, boy, I won't miss the next one because I think she'll come after me with a large hammer. The other thing that I'd like to point out is the council does not do recalls. That isn't in our purview. We don't do it. That's completely outside of this council. And we try to run every meeting in connection with the Brown Act and remain legal at all times. So for those who think that there's some unfair advantages for speakers and what have you versus council members, yeah, it appears to me that it's unfair too, but it's a law that we follow.
And Mr. Mayor, I propose that, you're just about out of time on the, on the item.
And now my lawyer is speaking, so I better shut up. But anyway, thank you for being here. Okay. Where are we now?
Okay, we are going to, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, the next item is.
Oh, we want to take a break, I'm sorry.
A break.
I know there's some people here who want to take a break. So we'll recess for five minutes. The other thing that I'd like to point out is the council does not do recalls. That isn't in our purview. We don't do it. That's completely outside of this council. And we try to run every meeting in connection with the Brown Act and remain legal at all times. So for those who think that there's some unfair advantages for speakers and what have you versus council members, yeah, it appears to me that it's unfair too, but it's a law that we follow.
And Mr. Mayor, I propose that. You're just about out of time on the item.
And now my lawyer is speaking, so I better shut up. But anyway, thank you for being here. Okay. Where are we now?
Okay, we are going to, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, the next item is...
Oh, we want to take a break. I'm sorry.
A break?
I know there's some people here who want to take a break. So we'll recess for five minutes.
We'll bring the meeting back to order.
All right, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, the next item on the agenda is item six, the consent calendar. And there are four resolutions for consideration. I should read those resolutions. Consent calendar, item five, resolution number two zero one nine dash three one, a resolution of the city council of the city of Simi Valley, adopting program supplement number F zero four nine to administering agency state agreement number zero seven dash five four zero five, F one five, for the major streets rehabilitation project. Consent calendar, item seven, resolution number two zero one nine dash three three, a resolution of the city council of the city of Simi Valley, approving the city of Simi Valley's Title V program. Consent calendar, item eight, resolution number two zero one nine dash three four, a resolution of the city council of the city of Simi Valley, accepting the public improvements for track number five nine six zero, located at four three zero seven Walnut Street. Consent calendar, item nine, resolution number two zero one nine dash three five, a resolution of the city council of the city of Simi Valley, amending resolution number two zero one five dash six one and resolution number two zero one five dash three five, to adjust the salary ranges for the crossing guard, lead crossing guard, and the theater technician one classifications affected by state minimum wage increases.
And pardon me, Madam Clerk, on item seven, I believe that's title six.
Title six, excuse me, yes.
Okay, who wants to pull what? You don't have to pull anything. It's strictly my need.
I'd like to pull item four and seven, and I just have a very quick question on item four. And seven I would like to pull.
Okay.
And I'd like to pull item five.
Okay. All right, item four, question.
The question is, I know that there's money that's left over and it's supposed to go back into the fund. And I just want to, and I know it was money that's left over from the free clinic, so I just want to make sure that when it's available for next year's cycle of awards, is it available for any applicant or only for the free clinic?
The way that we structured it is that there is currently 10,000 held in contingency each fiscal year for the three fiscal years that council awarded community projects grant funding to the free clinic. This returned funding is being added to this year's 10,000, so it'll increase the total amount to about 13,100 available. When we come back to the council to release the contingency, at that point, council could give staff direction to provide that funding to another community need.
So it could be available to anyone?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. That was my question.
Okay, five.
So my question, and I asked Mr. Fujiwaki this earlier, but I want to ask him again just publicly so I understand better. There, it's a worthwhile project, I think the funding, I mean, it's clearly needed, and the selection process was valid as far as who you selected, et cetera. My real question is why we're doing the project now, knowing that major construction will soon be occurring in that area with the demolishing and the building of the farmer's property, which is right there. And my concern is we spent all this money on a beautiful road, and then the next year we have big trucks moving dirt, et cetera, and destroying it. And so I did, that's my question, is why we're doing it then? And is there anything we can do to mitigate that? Or can there be a postponing in time and still use these funds? I guess is what I...
The original development of the project came a couple of years ago in the planning process, and so I believe that was before the farmer's development was in play at this point. In terms of mitigating any potential impact to the newly paved roads, we can, we can work with a developer or we can add conditions to the development with regards to routes for construction vehicles. So they wouldn't, or they would minimize traffic on Cochran Street.
And what would that look like? They take Alamo and Sequoia and Galena? Is that what you're saying?
We would put them on the major highways. Alamo is a major highway. Potentially, we could, we could split it among various routes to the, to the area. Unfortunately, some of Cochran will be used.
But this has to be done now, I guess is my question. The way this is structured and bid, you couldn't postpone the project for a year, for instance, and still keep the funding in place? And it needs to, it has to be done now?
That's correct.
I guess my follow-up question to Councilmember Litter's comment is, is there any guarantee that the farmer's project is going to go through? I mean, there's still other things that need to go through the process, right? It may not actually go through?
That, that's the best, as I understand, it's, it's not a sure thing at this point.
Okay. So it may not impact it if it doesn't actually pan out?
So the postpone may not be...
Yeah, I understand, I just, it...
No, it makes sense what you're saying.
Yeah.
But... There's no answer at this point, definite.
Gotcha.
Okay, number seven?
Yes, I read the report and, you know, I was, I had a lot of questions. On page two of the report, it says, "The purpose of the city's Title VI program is to ensure the meaningful access to transit-related programs and activities by persons with limited English proficiency." And, you know, I wanted to ask specifically how we do this. I saw that there was some advertising in the report of, you know, at Simi Valley City Hall, at the senior center, and the transit center. And I was wondering, is there any, you know, Spanish advertisement, since that is the protective class that's, you know, in the report? Is there any Spanish advertisement at the places where Spanish speakers would hang out? Or, you know, at the bus stops? Or, you know, our previous speaker, Juan Miguel, mentioned that, you know, it's the first time you've seen a flyer, a bilingual flyer. And I know the council member judge mentioned everything's on the internet and bilingual, but there's a great digital divide amongst, you know, lower-income families, which tend to be minorities, so they don't always have access to internet.
Right.
So, you know, there is a need for, you know, paper copies and, and places for these, this information to be for our bilingual writers, especially our Spanish-speaking writers.
Some of our, our bus routes and transit information already is bilingual, one in English, one in Spanish. And they are available, we'll make them available. When we start to implement the new bus routes in the next couple of months, we will be posting notices both in English and Spanish on the TV. We can add a Spanish version when we advertise in the, our plan is to advertise in the Acorn. And wherever we, and I think the report by the consultant indicated that there is still some work to be done on some of our forms and documents and information. So we will be, we're in the process of updating those to both an English and Spanish version. So as much as possible, as a result of the report, we will be implementing a Spanish version as well.
Might I suggest reaching out to the faith communities?
Pardon?
Might I suggest reaching out to the faith communities and distributing some of the flyers at the faith communities, because there tend to be a lot of Spanish speakers?
Sure.
And my concern was with the program, with the data that was captured, is that, you know, I don't feel that all the English language learners, and I'm glad we met the 5% threshold, but I feel like there was, there's a lot more English learners, you know, out there that we're not capturing this data. For example, seniors or older people who don't have children in school, I saw that the data was captured by looking at the statistics from the California Department of Education and students who volunteer, you know, what their primary language is at home. And if you're an older person and you don't have children in school, you're not going to capture those English learners. If you're a senior citizen, you're gonna, you're not going to capture those English learners. So, and if you have students that are homeschooled, you know, we have Vista Charter Real as well. I have friends who's, you know, they don't speak English, their children don't speak English, and they, you know, are homeschooling their kids, and so that data's not captured either.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, my concern is just making sure that we cast a wide net to make sure that we, you know, reach out to that population, to the Spanish-speaking population.
Sure. That would be our plan. And you mentioned faith-based organizations. Yes, we'd be glad to include them in any kind of information distribution we have.
Okay, and then the last question I have for you is on page 29. Well, at the top it says page 29, and on the bottom it says page 24, so I apologize if it's a little confusing. Where it says section six, the public participation plan. And if you look down where it says section nine, underneath where it says the summary, it says, "The committee includes two non-elected members from each city for the transit-focused advisory boards," and that section nine depicts the racial membership of the aforementioned non-elected boards and commissions as self-identified by the members. And, you know, seeing as how we are, you know, we have 27% of our population is Latino, you know, are we moving in that direction to make sure that we are including on those boards? And I believe one of the public speakers, speakers mentioned, you know, can we diversify our boards to reflect more of our, what our, you know, demographic makeup is in our community? What are our efforts in ensuring that we have, you know, that racial membership that is reflective of our community?
I believe most of our boards and those not appointed by the council are voluntary positions where people apply. So it would be our task to increase our outreach to some of the communities that you mentioned, some of the areas, the faith-based organizations, get the information out that these voluntary positions are available, and we are interested in diversity and try to expand the makeup of these boards and commissions. We can obviously do something like that.
And I'll be happy to do outreach and translate if need be. I used to translate for the immigration court, so I'm more than happy to provide support for that endeavor.
We'll take you up on that.
Absolutely. Thank you. That's all I have.
Sir, are you ready to vote on?
Oh, I'm sorry, one more question. There, I noticed on page 31, it said that there was no specific equity study that was prepared, and I was very disconcerted by that. Why was there no equity study done? I didn't know if it was a lack of time or a lack of funding, or I saw that there was intention in the future to do an equity study, but I was curious as to why there was no equity study done previously.
I, I don't have an answer. I'm not sure.
Okay, that's it. That's my question. Thank you.
Okay, are you ready to vote?
Yes.
Okay, is everybody ready to vote? Okay.
I made to approve the consent calendar. Items one through nine.
Nine.
Second.
Call for the vote.
Motion passes unanimously. Okay, Mr. Mayor and city council members, there is no continued business items this evening. So the next item on the agenda is new business item eight A, approval of proposed sanitation service rates authorization to proceed with the Proposition 218 process and recommendation to set a public hearing to consider adoption of new, excuse me, of new sanitation service rates. And Ron Fujiwaki, Joe Deacon are here for this presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Mashburn and council members. This evening, staff is requesting that the city council consider proposed sanitation service rates for the five, next five fiscal years. That's FY 20 dash 21 through FY 24 dash 25. It is also requested that the city council authorize staff to proceed with the Proposition 218 noticing process and send a, set a public hearing for October 28, 2019. It should be noted, and we will probably say this several times during our presentation this evening, you are not adopting rates tonight. You are simply approving a set of rates that will be posted and outlined in the Prop 218 notice, so as a starting point for discussion at the public hearing. As indicated, the rates will be outlined in the Prop 218 notice that are, that is sent to all sanitation customers. At the October 28, 2019 public hearing is when the city council will then have the option to adopt rates as proposed this evening, or rates that are less than those proposed if a majority protest is not achieved. Sanitation services are funded by user fees that provide for the daily operation and maintenance of the water quality control plant, the sewer collection system, and the construction of capital projects. In developing the proposed fees, staff analyze current and future revenues and expenditures to provide sewer services and identify the nexus between the proposed fees and the cost to provide the services. Two key studies were prepared, including the 2019 sewer system reliability assessment and financial plan update and the 2019 sanitation rate study. The 2019 assessment and financial plan analyzed sanitation infrastructure and identified 56 projects to rehabilitate and replace the aging infrastructure over the next 20 years. Project cost estimates for all 56 projects are approximately 168.4 million, with 44.8 million for the water quality control plant, 120.4 million for the sewer system, and 3.2 million for other projects. And this is above the recent ESCO contract and projects that the council approved, I believe, at the last meeting. As required for utility fee increases, a draft sanitation rate study was prepared that shows the nexus between the cost to provide sanitation services and the proposed fees to cover the cost. Now, Joe Deacon, our Assistant Public Works Director, will discuss the proposed rate increases and the process for adopting the rates.
Yes, good evening, city council. Mayor, I'd like to discuss with you what, what is needed to go through in order for us to further consider changing the rates for sanitation services. A little bit of background, sanitation is, sanitation is an enterprise operation. Basically, the fees we charge for service are paid for the expenses within the sanitation operation. The operations includes the ongoing operations and maintenance expenses, the typical annual expenses, labor, utilities, supplies, outside contracts, and minor maintenance, as well as capital projects. And within capital projects, we include repairs... And within capital projects, we include repairs, replacements, major overhaul of facilities. Occasionally, we'll do an improvement, but most of our capital work is simply replacement of aging infrastructure. Why do we need a rate increase? The current fiscal year sanitation budget indicates a $2.4 million shortfall this fiscal year between expenses and revenues. So we're already in a slight deficit based on our capital needs. In addition to this, O&amp;M expenses are projected to increase 3.5% per year. This is typical, or in some cases, more than typical inflationary pressures on those operating expenses I noted. Our average capital expenses over the next five years is over $9 million. As Ron said, we've been looking long-term at our assets and their replacement needs, and we're finding that this is about the pace that we need to make expenses just in order to keep our infrastructure operating reliably as it has been. And at the last council meeting, or two council meetings ago, we asked the council to set a policy for reserves, and the council adopted a 180-day operating reserve plus one-year capital projects reserve. And together, that total is $17.5 million. Now, it changes year to year, but that's a target we're aiming at, and I'll come back to that in a couple of slides. So graphically, why do we need a rate increase? This graph shows, the bars show the expenses. The blue part of the bar is operations and maintenance, the orange part of the bar is capital expenses. So for each of the five years, you see what our expenses are in those bars. The purple line that goes straight across shows what our current revenue is and what it would be if we just kept the same revenue for the next five years. It would not keep up with expenses, and the red line shows what would happen to our cumulative cash balance. We have about $20 million in our checking account, so to speak, right now, and that checking account would deplete to about $10 million negative over the next five years were we to maintain our capital expenses as planned. So the need for the increase, again, if we go with what staff is proposing, you put out a notice in terms of what the increase would be, the red line in this case corrects for what the cash balance would be, while the purple line at the top shows how the revenues would increase to keep pace with the expenses. So we would wind up, if you look at the fifth year of the red line, that dot in 2025 shows that our ending cash balance would be just about $17.5 million, which is our cash reserve goal. So we are looking at setting a rate that meets the reserve goal of $17.5 million. Again, our cash reserve changes year to year depending on the pressures of the capital expenses, but we set one goal, and that is to aim at that $17.5 million by the fifth year of this exercise. We are essentially looking at a increase in rates that averages for residential properties by about $3.50 per month each year, and for the next five years. It changes a little bit because we start out a little bit slower with the increase, and the increase increases over the five-year period. But this provides us, again, that cash revenue that we talked about. Now, there is a report that talks about the entier cost of service that we would enact that you could enact essentially for the service area. Now, it only affects residential properties, but all commercial properties. Commercial rates are much more complex, and the next two pages give you an idea of the commercial rates. I'm not going to get into all of them. Again, they're pretty complex. They have two components to it. There's a fixed rate and a volumetric rate for commercial properties, while domestic or residential properties only have a fixed rate. So it gets a little bit more complicated, but it's a commensurate increase for businesses, although some of the cost, the cost of service analysis indicated that some people pay more of an increase and some people pay a little bit less of an increase. So you can go through that category by category, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have. The process for rate setting follows a specific process outlined by the California Constitution, which is basically called Prop 218, Proposition 218, which was the proposition passed by the voters of California that enacted the process by which assessments are done. The assessment in this case is a utility fee increase called a property-related fee in which a protest ballot is initiated. A protest ballot means we, the agency has to notify all the property owners of the proposed increase and has to see if there is a majority of protests that are issued against the increase. So if a majority of the parcels, in our case, that's about 38,000 parcels that we serve, if a majority of those parcel owners object to the proposed increase, then the agency may not take action on the increase. If less than a majority protests, then the agency may take other action as it deems fit, may enact the increase, and may enact a portion of the increase, or it may also just remain as-is. In order for the agency to take action, also a nexus or a specific connection between the cost and the provision of services has to be analyzed, and that report has to be available to the public. We have included a draft report of the sanitation service rate cost-of-service analysis for your review, and we would post that on our website and make it available to the public if we were to go out with the notice, as we've indicated we'd like your approval of. We are working on five-year rates that were adopted in 2015. This past fiscal year, right alongside the fiscal year budget, actually a meeting before the budget was approved, your council did approve the last fiscal year of the last five-year rate increase for sanitation. So we are in the sunset of our most recent five years. And part of the Prop 218 process requires utility rates to have a sunset of a maximum of five years. So that is the maximum amount of time they can be approved. And again, Ron said we're going to say it multiple times. I may say it yet once more, but I wanted to remind you, you are not approving rates tonight. We talk about rates, we put them in front of you, but you do not approve rates until the public hearing is held. So the notification process, as I went through, a notice must be sent to all property owners describing the proposed rate. We have a draft notice, Prop 218 notice, in the agenda package for your review. Protests must be in writing, the protests by the property owners protesting the rate increase must be submitted in writing or must be presented at the public hearing. So we will only accept written protests. Part of the draft Prop 218 notice that we have included for your review includes a ready-made ballot that somebody can simply clip out of their notice and mail back to the city or deliver it to the city. The council may, and I mentioned this before as well, but the council, at the public hearing, should you go through with the notification process, at the public hearing, the council has the option of adopting a rate increase up to the amount of the notice. You are not bound by adopting just that amount. You can adopt an increase that is less than that posted, or you can adopt no increase at all. And part of our process will be to go out and talk to the public more about this. We'll, of course, put a notice on the city's website. We will provide notice on Simi Valley Television. We'll present to neighborhood councils a similar presentation tonight, but provide more insight into the actual cost and the revenue requirements that we are looking for, present to the Chamber of Commerce and to the Budget Advisory Committee appointed by this council, and conduct a special meeting to allow people to attend and speak whatever questions or concerns they have and respond directly to those questions at that meeting. So we recommend tonight that you approve the draft notice, the Prop 218 notice that we've included in your package, that you set October 28, 2019 as a public hearing date for consideration of sanitation rates. And I warned you, I was going to say it once more. Keep in mind, you're not adopting a rate tonight. And one more slide. And with that, I'll answer any questions you have. And I want to make note, too, I didn't mention it earlier, we presented two reports, one for your approval, and that is the Facilities Assessment. That study was written by Corolla engineers. Corolla engineer staff is in the audience tonight, should you have any questions on that study. And the other study you're looking at tonight, only in draft, you will look to adopt that at your public hearing. The Cost of Service Analysis that was provided to you in draft is written, authored by Black and Veach Associates. Black and Veach staff is also in the audience tonight. Should you have any questions on that report? And I'll be happy to answer, and they will be happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Questions, folks, staff?
There are no questions because the report was written so well and thoroughly. There are no questions.
I have quite a few questions.
We do.
But, but you can ask everyone else first if you're, is no one else? Okay. Okay. Tell me, what was the percentage increase rate from 2015 to 2019 that is sunsetting right now? Because if I understand, this is a 7% increase basically per year, correct?
And it was about the same. It was 8% or more.
8% or more has gone on the last five years, and now we're voting to possibly go for 7.5 or whatever it was.
Yes.
Percent increase for the next five years.
Right.
Okay.
And before, by the way, just as a matter of background, before the past increase, before that, we hadn't raised sanitation rates in at least six years. I'd have to look at the number, but it was a long time.
Sure.
That sanitation rates were flat. So there was a lot of pent-up demand.
So in your report, you had a comparison with Simi Valley with other cities.
Yes.
And I should go to, you don't have it up there. I should go to the page.
And I don't think we have that as a slide.
You don't have it as a slide? It's in here.
Page 6.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. So if I do my math correctly, and I'll go to page 6, right now, we are, where's page 6? Okay. Right now, Simi Valley currently is about third on the list of comparison, correct? At about $38.58, based on that chart.
Correct. Yes.
But if we do, if we were to enact the five-year rates that you suggest that, if in full, that would take us to a rate of $55.85 in five years. So basically, we would then be to the very top of the chart. Is that, now, obviously, they may be raising their rates over five years, too. So I realize this may not be apples to apples, but that's correct. Is it based on this chart, we would then be moving to just after City of Ventura County? Or City of Ventura, excuse me.
Well, I think, I think your analysis is correct. I mean, this is a snapshot, looking at the current year. And I assume some of these other agencies, if not all of them, will also be looking at their rates over that five-year period. But your analysis is correct. We would wind up somewhere, yeah, right past Ventura.
Okay.
Ventura's current rate. By 2025.
Right. If they don't raise their rate. Gotcha. Okay.
Right.
Okay. Let me understand, because in your, and maybe this is a question for Corolla, but in your, and I'm glad you've got representatives here, but basically, what you're suggesting, these figures are taken from the Black study, or their financial study. But Corolla also gave four scenarios of financing. One is where you pay-as-you-go, almost entirely with no debt. The second one is pay-as-you-go with a little bit of debt, pay less and moderate debt, and no increase in rates, but a lot of debt. I think those are the four scenarios that are there. What I'm understanding then is that you are recommending the first choice, that we go with rates predominantly. Is that, is that what I'm hearing? Is that correct?
Yes.
And why do we choose that? Because I would have chosen a different scenario.
Well, under the, we do have some debt we are going into, as your council approved at the last meeting.
Sure.
So we do have some.
Right.
Debt for the first time in the Sanitation Enterprise Fund history, by the way. So, but yes, going forward, we're still looking at a pay-as-you-go model for the next five years with regard to our capital program. So this five-year program does not look at issuing further debt in the horizon of the next five years.
I think we're looking at a pay-as-you-go because it's a manageable amount of money.
Yes.
On an annual basis for capital projects to address in the rate adjustment. If we had a significant more amount of projects that needed to be done, we would sort of look at a bonding type of situation. But I think because it's manageable, we can do it through just a rate adjustment rather than borrow more money.
The difference, though, and here's my concern, is what we're talking about with sewer, with the 56 projects, which are all, I'm not questioning the validity of these projects, most of them are long-term projects, you're replacing some, whether it's computers, or whether it's lift station, or whether it's piping, et cetera. Most of those are designed 40, 50, 60 years to last. And so what, by doing it entirely with people here, with pay-as-you-go, they're basically paying to, right now, for something that should last 40 or 50 years. So the one time I think bond or debt is appropriate is when you want to spread it out so that it's shared over a longer time period by more people.
Well, there's an interesting, one of the analytical things to look at is in the 20-year plan that the Facilities Assessment covers, we're looking at over $160 million in capital projects over that 20-year period, current dollars. So that's $8 million a year. Our current expense rate over the next five years is just over $9 million. So we're not looking at an out-of-trend expense over the next five years in the context of the 20 years, which is one of the reasons we took a longer-term look in the Facilities Assessment than the five-year horizon that's allowed by Prop 218, is to see what that capital investment will be on a slightly longer term. So to answer your question, I think, and going back to what the city manager's saying, in context of what we need to invest over the next five years, it seems to be about the right pace of what we need to adopt or expend, at least, I won't call it the long term, at least through the medium term of the next 20 years. So it's not out of character what we need to invest. We don't even have to invest a tremendous amount in the next five years. It's about the same.
I understand what you're saying, but it is asking our homeowners, our taxpayers, et cetera, to increase our rates. Let me make sure I'm being accurate with this. So the rates, and this shows up in their, normally in their property tax assessment, correct?
Yeah.
So, if it's increasing, let's say, I should go with the rates that you want to do it. I'm sorry, I'm looking at the rates that I was going to propose. But, so your rates, let's say, okay, and so it starts at, it's, basically, it's $2.89 a month more in 2020, up to $4.09 a month in 2024. So let's say at $3, so basically, it's going to be like $36 more that would show up in addition this next year, 2020, correct? And so by 2024, it would be almost about $50 additional that would show up on there.
Right.
On there. On there, on there. I'm sorry, there was, okay, I just want, and help me understand, page 14 of the report, you have a line item, "Transfer to Sanitation Replacement Fund." Is that part of your, I mean, help me understand the nature of that. Is that part of the reserve that you're trying to build?
Is this the rate study?
Nature of the fund averages about $9.7 million annually.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that? I was busy looking for the
No, it's all right. On page 14 of the report, you have a line item, "Transfer to Sanitation Replacement Fund." I want to know, is this, in essence, a type of reserve, or?
No, the transfer is really aimed at keeping pace with, you can almost look at it as a capital expense. That's, that's a pace that we will, will be drawing down, the capital replacement fund. So we need to keep transferring from the operations fund into that to pay for capital projects.
Okay.
So that's just a drawdown that basically keeps pace with capital project expense.
Okay. And the 11 improvement projects that we approved with the Snyder Electric last time, or one recently, were those energy efficiency savings built into this document, this rate? I mean, because that was supposed to give us savings of X amount of dollars. Were those monetary savings over time built into this report?
Yes, we did, we did estimate
So those estimated savings are encapsulated?
In the operations and maintenance side of the report, yes.
Those are my questions for now, but I want to know if we're, if we can make in time, because I would propose, to be very honest, I, I would, and this is for the council, and so I don't know who the question's for. I would propose, rather than the rates that are being proposed right now, that we look more at some of the other scenarios that are shared, not quite as extensive, right? Especially since we've raised it 8%, 8%, and then now asking for 7%. That we not be quite as aggressive on our taxpayers and shoulder some of that with bonded indebtedness, just because of the nature of, so anyway, I'm gonna add that, just so you know, that's something I'm interested in. I don't know if, if, how, I mean, I would, how, whether we would, I would do, when the time comes, whether I would do a motion to change the rates that are being put out to our public, or whether that, or whether you're not, I can't do that at this point. In which case, I will, I just try to know how that gets done.
What you're, what you're looking at tonight is the ceiling.
I understand.
So, what you're, you can always approve something lower under that different scenario.
I understand.
At the October meeting. But what we can do is, we can take a look, we can work with, with our consultants and like, take a look at the cost of borrowing versus the cost of pay-as-you-go, because there is, there is a cost to borrow money.
Sure, sure.
So we could, we can certainly take a look at that.
And there's percentages, we're in this report of what, of what they anticipated.
Yeah.
The rates, et cetera, it's here, yeah, okay.
I move that the city council approve the proposed sanitation service rates, authorize staff to initiate a Prop 218 process by mailing a notice of proposed sanitation service rates, and set a public hearing for October 28th, 2019, to consider adopting new sanitation service rates.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, the next item on the agenda is new business item 8B, adoption of a resolution to establish city council meeting protocols. And there is a resolution for your consideration. It is Resolution Number 2019-36. A resolution of the city council of the City of Simi Valley, establishing city council meeting protocols. And Samantha Argerbright is here for this presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Mashburn, and members of the city council. The item before you is the establishment of protocols for city council meetings. The categories for which protocols and procedures are proposed include public statements, the use of a translator by members of the public, decorum for members of the public, city council member requests for future council agenda items, and responses by city council members to public statements. An optional area for the city council's consideration is to extend the privilege of the floor to a council member whose integrity, characters, or motives were questioned or impugned during public statements. Staff plans to return to the city council, either at its own initiative or its city council direction, to amend the protocols as needed for additional protocols in the future. It is recommended that the city council adopt the attached resolution establishing city council meeting protocols. I'm available for questions.
I just have one question. Did we get copies of the protocols from all the different cities?
Yes.
Would I be, I would like to see those at some point, if it's okay. Thanks.
I have the same request. There was, it was very hard to, I had a lot of concerns about the proposals, and I would really like to have more time to sit and compare to what other cities are doing. It was just some of the stuff there, so, we do not have to adopt a resolution tonight, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so I would ask for more time for us to be able to look at, you know, other cities, bylaws and, you know, rules and bylaws, and protocols. I'm sorry, I'm used to calling them rules and bylaws, that's what you call them, boards of directors. But the protocols, to be able to compare and contrast, because it's, it's hard to do that when you just have one, you know, one set of rules in front of you. But, you know, I did have concerns about some of the things that were stated here, some of the suggestions, so, but I want to reserve actually, you know, setting forth until we have time to actually look at the other ones.
Other comments?
I just had some questions, if I could. You talked about the decorum for the public. And it says that remarks shall be limited to the matters, subject related to the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. And I just want to understand what that is meant by the subject matter jurisdiction of the council.
And you're looking at decorum for members of the public?
Correct.
Maybe I should answer that, because I added that in there.
Okay. Okay, well, there you go.
Basically, the Brown Act says that the council has a subject matter jurisdiction, which is pretty broad, as a matter of fact, and there's a lot of debates about what that is. But a public comment can only go as far as that. So if someone says, "Let me tell you about my lunch today," and they don't say anything to do with the city, then you can say you're off-topic, because it's not in your subject matter jurisdiction. But if they can tie it to a city issue, then it is within the jurisdiction of the council. So that's just the Brown Act language, the subject matter jurisdiction.
Okay, thank you. Next question. You had an optional area of extending the privilege to the floor of an additional 60 seconds. I want to know what that looks like. When is that privilege to be extended? Would it be at the end of public comments? Would it, in other words, tacked on to the 90 seconds? Would it be during, in the middle? Would it be, okay, I'm gonna give this person 60 minutes to respond? It wasn't clear, what does that look like? Is it afterwards, is that what?
It's intended to be tacked on to that 90 seconds.
At the end?
Correct.
And then the other thing that I would, would, maybe one little change that I would like. Future agenda items, it says the city manager should decide scheduling. I would like to add the mayor to that mix. I think it should state in the document, city manager and mayor should decide scheduling together, not just the city manager. Is that all right? I mean, that's just
That's okay, and that's technically what we're doing now.
But what, this is, this is, this is the decorum. If we vote on this tonight, it just says city manager. That's what the document says. So I'm just saying, if I, I might do a friendly amendment, if and when. Okay.
Yeah, so, I'm, I'm good with that, I think that, that's good.
That's it, that was my questions, and thank you.
Questions, Dee?
No, I was just asking for the other cities, so that I could look them over and see if we need to add to these, because this, I know, is just a start. So, it's, it's a draft per se that we're going to implement, if we vote for yes. And then we can adjust as things come up and add to or take away. Okay, that was my intention.
That's, that was my understanding, that if we voted on this tonight, it becomes policy, protocol, immediately.
And it becomes a living document.
But it's a living document, and that's, that's what's good about it. And then the one, the question I had, I don't think anybody's yet, is, not that we've had this problem, but with recently people bringing in so many signs, I have this fear that people are gonna get emotional, and they're holding the sign now, depending on what kind, if it's just a paper sign, no big deal. But if they're holding a real estate sign that, that they made their sign out of, from the front yard, and then they get emotionally involved and conk somebody on the head with it, then we're, we're talking about more than a sign, maybe a weapon. So I don't know if, if the proper way is to dictate what type of sign can be brought in, or to just make sure that the police department kind of scans looking. I, I'll use an extreme. If somebody brings a banner in hanging on a baseball bat, that's not a good idea, in my opinion. So is there a way we can address that? That's, that's all I'm asking. Because really and truly, the less you bring in, the far better it is. It's better for letting people see what's going on, and we could have them put their signs in the lobby, where, you know, everybody can see them there, so.
Mr. Mayor, I did look at this a little bit, you know, as far as signs. There's pretty strong First Amendment law on allowing signs in the chamber, as I think we've discussed, and it's been discussed a little bit. There's a few cities that have gone and said things like, you can't have a wooden reinforcement or a stick in the sign. But before the council made that move, we'd want to research and see how far out in front that is. That's, that's sort of very few cities that have that, but there are a couple that we found. So, you know, it is a possibility, but the risk assessment, I don't have yet on if we make that law.
Well, I'm more willing to wait until you do that, because like I say, if we can move forward on this, I think it's great, because then we've got a baseline, and it's a living document. What we agree upon to change, we can change as we go. That might be a little more labor-intensive for staff, but I would like to see us get something and get it soon.
If I could just add, the law still is that if a sign is obstructing any particular person's view, it can be called out by the chair, and they have to move that, if it's causing a disruption. So do we still have that?
And we also, we don't have it that often, so, and when we do, I think we have the police that can monitor. But we'd certainly want to be able to say, yeah, that sign could be turned into a weapon, let's not allow that.
If I may, Mayor, to that effect, I'm glad you brought that up. You know, there was, we have had audience members who have come to these city council meetings that have brought weapons to other city council meetings in other cities. And I would like to ask staff to entertain, you know, banning weapons, banning audience members from being weapons, or anyone from being weapons who's not an on-duty police officer, into city council chambers. I know for a fact that one of the, you know, audience members who came to a city council meeting last year here had taken a loaded gun to a city council meeting in Orange County at Santa Ana. And given, you know, the, unfortunately, the, the environment that we're in right now, in our society, and given, you know, that we have, you know, 100 people dying of mass shootings every day, I would prefer, you know, that we ban weapons, that we consider banning weapons from coming into city council chambers, so that everyone feels safe coming and speaking, and not worrying. If you're worried about, you know, someone smacking someone with a sign, I'm more worried about someone bringing a weapon, and, you know, discharging the weapon, and, and, you know, injuring somebody, whether it's a council member and audience member, and I just think it would, it would feel safer. This is something that a lot of, you know, at Sacramento, you know, the Capitol, I mean, any place that you go to where there are elected officials, at the, you know, at the county, state, federal level, you have, you know, ban of weapons. You have to go through metal detectors just to make sure, no. You know, I don't know if we have the staff or the, you know, the bandwidth to have metal detectors, but just, to even have a sign saying, hey, there are no weapons allowed at city council meetings, I think. Like, you know, the same concerns that you have about safety. I have the same concerns as well. And I would like to ensure the safety of the audience members and the staff and the, and the city council.
Do you have a name of that individual that came here with a weapon? Or came to another city council meeting with a weapon?
I'm sorry?
Do you have the name of that individual that came to another city council meeting with a weapon?
I don't have it with me, but I can email it to you. I can email it to you. He came, he came to the meeting in June last year. And he had taken a loaded gun to a city council meeting in Orange County.
When you say loaded gun, was he allowed to carry that loaded gun?
I, I'm, I'm not talking about banning anyone's First Amendment rights. I'm talking about being in line with other elected, you know, with other entities, with elected officials, where there's just no weapons allowed, unless it's a non-duty, you know, police officer, FBI.
What about CCW carriers?
I'm sorry?
What about CCW holders? We have a lot of those in Ventura County.
Okay, well, I'm saying for the safety and the sake, you know, I, I trust our police department. I try, I love seeing, you know, our chief of police here and our police department here, because it makes me feel safe.
Have we had any problems?
And knowing that they're the only ones that have weapons, you know, because they're, you know, our, our officers who are here to protect us, then I think that's enough security for the rest of us. And I think we should entrust our, our police department to keep us safe. I know I do.
Okay, that's, wow, that's another large, that's a large subject to, anyway. Moving forward on the, what we have before us. I don't need to read what every other city's doing. I will, don't get me wrong. I trust that staff has reviewed that, and that's the reason they reviewed it, is so they could come up with this list. I trust that they've come up with a similar list to many other cities, am I correct?
Each city varies. Some are more extensive than others, so this is kind of a middle ground.
And by making this a live document, we're off and running, we could be off and running. And so, I appreciate the work that staff has done. And, you know, we knew it was a time-consuming process. And I appreciate what work has been done. I thought it was quite extensive and well-written. And like I say, the only thing I could come up with was, I didn't want anybody beating anybody in the head with a sign, but of course, I also don't want anybody shooting each other. That kind of goes without saying, but maybe it does need to be said. But, anyway, what's the council want to do?
I'm ready, I'm ready, I'm willing to make a motion.
Okay.
I move that we adopt the attached resolution establishing city council meeting protocols for the purpose of ensuring efficient city council meetings with the optional provision, including the mayor extending the privilege of the floor to a council member whose character has been impugned, with the addition of the mayor being added to the discussion of setting the agenda.
Further, I could, that's Section 55 of the protocol. So it proposed, read would be the city manager and mayor?
Correct.
Will determine?
Call for the vote?
Are we gonna have discussion?
Well, we had, but we can go again if you like.
Okay, well, usually, when you call
I know what the rules say, but we don't do it that way, and never have. That's why we have the discussion beforehand, but you're more than welcome to.
Both council member and Kavanaugh and I asked for the other copies of it, so that we could look at it. I specifically asked if we could continue the discussion, so we could have all the information that staff had.
That's fine, discuss away.
So, I mean, I have some concerns about, you know, chilling of the First Amendment rights in terms of limiting the amount of, you know, amount of time for speakers to 45 minutes total. What if you have 50 speakers? Does each person get 45 seconds to speak? I mean
That's what happens, yeah. They divide it equally and proportionately, I think that's a Brown Act.
What I read in it, Councilmember Lovinos, is that the mayor has the option of, of limiting it to 45, if he felt the nature, the length of the meeting was such. But that, my impression was that when, that very likely he would generally not use that option, but just gives him that option if there were three or four very, you know, I don't know, things that were gonna go until 3:00 in the morning, allow ability to shorten shorten the meeting. That was my understanding, but not mandatory, and that's why I was okay with it.
I guess I'm concerned with the, you know, equitable application of the rules. You know, it seems to be there's certain times when it's like, okay, everyone gets the, you know, there's a lot of speakers, and depending on the topic, everyone gets three minutes, and then other times when there's still a lot of speakers, and then there's two minutes, and it seemed at one point that we had decided that Mayor Mashburn was asking, you know, how many speaker cards do we have, was asking the city clerk, and then based on that, determined whether or not you were gonna limit it to two minutes versus a three minutes. I'd just like to see some consistency in terms of application, and not just...
Show me, show me one time where we were inconsistent. Just give me the meeting, give me a date.
Well, I don't have the dates for it.
Okay, I understand that.
There have been times, there have, you know, since I've been elected, you know, in December, there were times where we had, you know, more than twenty speakers, where you allowed the full three minutes, and then there were other times when we had more than twenty speakers, where you limited it to less than, you know, to two minutes, and so...
Did we, did we?
That's what I'm asking.
I don't think I've ever limited to two minutes, in fact, quite, quite the opposite. I go the other way. When people come in here and wanna speak, I wanna do everything in my power to allow them to speak, and I've always done that. I don't recall any time when I've, I've optioned to do the reduction in time. So you're gonna have to tell me when that happened, so I can look it up and...
Well, I would gladly research that.
Okay.
If we can table this, so that we, I can give you those...
Now, I'm not gonna table this. We can go forward, there's no reason to table this.
Okay, well, that, that is one of my concerns.
Maybe that portion of it.
Okay, well, that, that is one of my concerns, is...
This is why it's a live, a live document, so you're able to come back week after week and say, you know what, I'd like to massage this and do it this way, or can we talk about doing that and making these changes? No one's saying we're not gonna make changes.
Well, I'm asking for changes right now before we adopt this, because I've had many, you know, residents also, you know, talk about, they weren't sure when, when they could turn in cards, public speaker cards, that that time used to be, you know, extended, and now it's been limited, and they weren't sure on when they could, you know, submit speaker cards.
Okay.
And there's also another change with regard to, you know, requesting nine A, future agenda items. It used to be that one council member could request an agenda item, and on here, on council member request for future agenda items on page five, you know, you've changed, there's a change to the rule here, saying that there must be concurrence of two or more city council members.
Okay, that's...
Verbally agreeing, so that, that's another change.
Are you gonna allow me to respond?
Yes.
Thank you. The, the times haven't changed, the placement of the times have, and we gave explicit instructions to the folks that were here, explaining to them that we did change the order. One was because we put a public hearing item up front, because we didn't feel it was appropriate to make a developer coming in with consultants on payroll and sit here through a very long period of time, which I elected to give three minutes to each speaker, but we knew this was gonna go well into, you know, after midnight. So we transferred out of courtesy to the person on the public hearing item, and we explained that and got consensus from the crowd. So that was a change, but it wasn't a change in time. So don't spin it to like we changed the times and we, we randomly select out of the sky what we're gonna do tonight. It's been three minutes every time, every time I've done it. I haven't done anything. We have had discussions on how to make it better for everybody, for this council and for the audience, and how do we place their speaking so it has more appropriate timing for us to hear it? So we don't listen to hours of people talking about a project, when the next thing up is gonna be public statements about any issue they wanna talk about.
Well, my concern...
So, so I'm, I'm very proud of the fact that we're trying to best serve this public.
Well, my concern is that, you know, again, you express a deference to developers, and we're here to serve the people. We're here to serve the people that elected us, we're here to serve the residents. And, you know, if the developers have to stay a little bit longer, they have to stay a little bit longer. I have been at school board meetings till one or two in the morning, not here, but, you know, when my, when, you know, I was in Los Angeles, as, you know, Los Angeles Unified School District, and because I cared so much about the issue, I stayed till two in the morning, and I have no problem, and, you know, I have no problem staying here until two in the morning, listening to our residents. But I think we should show preference to our residents and not to our developers, because the developers are here to meet the needs of the community, and we should give deference to the community and not to the developers. And I'm not saying I'm not willing to work with the developers, but if they have to stay a little bit longer, so that our, our community members, especially our senior community members, who won't be able to catch a bus after nine o'clock to get back home, I think we should give deference to our community members, to listen to them.
I'm not choosing sides. I'm choosing to do what I think is best for the community, and that's why we related to the community that we were doing that. Didn't hear any protests, by the way. Didn't hear anybody say, no, 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 we wanna speak right now.
Show the mailman the list.
What?
Show the mailman the list.
Well, well, I mean, if you wanna close discussion, but those are my concerns, you know, there's just a lot of stuff in here that's, that, you know, is out the discretion of the mayor, and it just seems like it's showing free speech of our community members, and that's my concern. My concern is making sure that, you know, I, I'm glad that this issue has finally come forth. I can't believe we've gone fifty years as a city without having protocols for how to run a city council meeting. I'm still shocked at that, but I'm glad that we're having it now. But I do think that we shouldn't rush into it and actually look at it and actually have discussion on it, and, you know, I, that, that is my opinion. I think there's too much here that's being changed from what protocol has been, and I, I think it's unfair to our residents.
I'll agree with you in one area. I'm disappointed that it wasn't in writing, but we've had protocols, and unfortunately...
But not written protocols?
Apparently not, and, and that's what I just said, that I agree with you, and I wish they had been. So we're correcting that. We're correcting it rapidly, and we've left the door open to correct it ongoing. And the, the timing thing is, my goal is to have everybody that wants to speak, speak for three minutes, and I haven't deviated from that. And the, there was a time, and it's not in writing, so I'm not clear, 'cause a lot of what we do gets kinda glossed over, or we change midstream without even realizing it. But there was a time where it took two council members to put something on the agenda. I, that was just common, common, in fact, it also took two council members and the city manager. And then the, the mayor and the city manager determined when it would go on, on the agenda.
So why the reversal now?
It's not a reversal, it's we need something in writing, and we asked staff to put it in writing.
So why not keep it as it is, where any city council member individually can request an agenda item?
Because suddenly we have, we have a situation where we have to wake up the past, because if we take without a vote and put everybody's choice to put something on the agenda, we're, we're gonna plug up the system, and like you said...
This would not be on the agenda if I hadn't requested, and I was the only one who requested this.
And we put it on in a hurry, maybe.
And who's...
And, and here we are, and now you're slowing it down, after you urgently needed it on here.
Because I would like to keep it the way it was, because if you change it, then we won't be able to have protocols.
Well, we choose not to keep it the way it was, or we may choose not to keep it the way it was.
That's why we vote.
That's why we vote, there's five of us here.
Right, and that's why I'm requesting, and you will still, we will still have five votes, if you allow one council member to put an item on the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, call for the question, we have a motion in a second.
Thank you. Call for the vote.
Motion passes with Councilmember Louvenus voting no. All right, the next item on the agenda is agenda item nine A, for members of the council to report on council member activity reports.
Councilmember Louvenus, whoops, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Lidster.
Councilmember Lidster.
It's been two good weeks, and I appreciate that we're all working together to make things And, and I'm gonna comment in this area that I do think that, whether it's one or two, we will have all that we need to discuss, there will always be someone to second, something that's important to be on this agenda. But on August the twelfth, Monday, I had the opportunity to meet with resident Randy Van Duke, who had some very good ideas to modify our 5G ordinance, and so I'm hoping to continue to work with him with some modifications that further protects our citizens, which I know all of us want to be doing that. On Thursday, August the fifteenth, I attended the Seroptimist Club of Simi Valley Awards, where Mike Sedell gave award in honor of his wife Judy, who was a probation officer, and gave funds to two very deserving women who were on probation to further their careers educationally, and I thought that was a wonderful, wonderful event this Seroptimist Club put on, and very generous of Mike Sedell. On Saturday, August the seventeenth, I attended the Islamic Society of Simi Valley's Eid Festival, wonderful gathering of, of faith and of wonderful Islamic people from throughout Simi Valley and the community, and it was just a great, great lovely celebration, it was good to be part of that. On August the twenty-first, I had the opportunity to meet with our, the selected entity who will be recruiting or interviewing for city manager, and want to commend Brian for the job that he's doing, but appreciate that we're going forward and making an official position with the employment group. Most recently, on Saturday, this past Saturday, I attended the Glow Festival, which is a new foundation here in Simi Valley, it was put on by the Simi Valley Cares Foundation, and they specifically earmarked funds, in this instance, for the Free Clinic. But I wanted to commend Debbie and Fred Thompson and Ryan Gennaro, who, Ryan was really the, the idea behind it, it was a wonderful festival, and Ryan served with me on the Neighborhood Council III, and I just wanna commend him for what he's doing for our community, and appreciate those who are working hard to make a difference here. That's my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Louvenus.
On Wednesday, August sixteenth, I met with our city manager, Brian, and with our city attorney, to get updates on what's happening in our city. I went to, I attended the Simi Valley Interfaith Meeting, they're having many, many events, a couple of which I attended throughout the community, and they're planning a unity walk for March of 2020, which I'm really, really excited about. Thursday, August fifteenth, I had a phone call with Left, talking about first mile, last mile, to try to improve ridership on our public buses. On Saturday, August seventeenth, I attended the Ventura County Pride Festival, which was a great event, I highly encourage you all to go. It was really, really fun, although I would really like to see it come back, us having our own Pride Festival here in, in Simi Valley, I think that would be amazing. On Sunday, August eighteenth, I attended Speaker, which was one of the interfaith events from NAMI, the National Alliance of Mental Illness, offering support and services for people with mental health issues here in, in Simi Valley, and that was at the UCC Church. On Tuesday, August twentieth, I attended the youth council meeting, they talked about what their plans are, they're gonna ask for a proclamation for anti-bullying and for suicide awareness, which I'm, I'm sure we will all support, for the months of September and October. And on Wednesday, August twenty-first, again, I met with my weekly meeting with the city manager and the city attorney, and that's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On August thirteenth, I met with the interim city manager to get updates on what's going on in the city. On Friday, August sixteenth, I wanna wish all the former paratroopers, current paratroopers, and all our veterans out there, Happy Airborne Day. On Wednesday, August twenty-fourth, I too met with a recruiter dealing with our city manager vacancy. I also attended with the mayor, our Simi Valley Arts Commission, that afternoon. I wanna say happy birthday to my daughter, who turned twenty-one on Friday, August twenty-third. And Saturday, August twenty-fourth, I attended the Second Annual Simi Valley Annual Beer Fest, and that was a very good event, it was well, it was well, I mean, there was a lot of people there, a lot more than last year, they had a lot more vendors, and everybody was having a great time. That's my report.
Representative Cavill.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Thursday, August fifteenth, oh, the EDC meeting, we were dark in August, so we'll have our next meeting in September. Unfortunately, I was unable to go to the Seroptimist Club luncheon, my mom was in the hospital for that weekend, so I kinda spent most of the weekend there. Sunday, in the hospital, was wonderful, as a matter of fact, they were great, and my mom said they have cute doctors. So, so, it's the only reason she stayed.
That's important.
That's important to her. Sunday, August eighteenth, my Rotary Club had another hot August nights, which was up at Quail Ranch, which is a beautiful event location here in our own Simi Valley. On Tuesday, August twentieth, I spoke with the hospital president about some strategic planning for here in our town. On Friday, August twenty-third, I spent the majority of the day at the city, I met with the recruitment gentleman for our city manager, and then myself and the mayor did city council interviews for our new city clerk, along with our manager, Brian. And then on Saturday, August twenty-fourth, the Glow Festival, I wasn't able to go, 'cause I had a prior commitment, but my commitment was with a group of high school friends, we all got together, somebody was from out of town, but we were up on the hill in the Knolls, and we could watch the Glow event, so that was pretty cool, so that, at least I got to see a part of it, so. And congratulations to the Thomases and their board of directors on a, a new Simi Cares Foundation, and the money that they made will be going to the Free Clinic, so I think that's a great, or Simarin Center. Is it Free Clinic?
Free Clinic.
Free Clinic, it was, I was right, Free Clinic. This year, the Free Clinic, so.
Free Clinic, yeah.
Right, that's it for me, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Monday, August twelfth, met with the folks regarding the Butler property, and along with Councilmember Judge. Looking for more here. Thursday, the fifteenth, I attended the Seroptimist Club Awards, and that was a nice event, Councilmember Lidster was also there, and we saw Mike Sedell's award for his wife, I don't know the right way of saying it, but there's a award in her name that's presented to two very deserving young ladies, and sidebar was, I, one of the young girls that received the award, I know her father, and didn't know that he was there until he got there, so that was kind of a nice thing. Let's see, on Wednesday, August twenty-first, I met with the Cano Simi Valley Association of Realtors, and we discussed the economic climate in our area, primarily, we discussed Thousand Oaks, Simi Valley, Moore Park, as far as, from a Realtor standpoint, and then spent the afternoon at the Arts Commission meeting with Councilmember Judge. And then Thursday, much to my disappointment, I could not attend the Simi Valley Tourism Marketing District meeting, because I had a conflicting meeting that I needed to attend up at the Ronald Reagan Library. Then Friday, August twenty-third, I attended the recruitment meeting with the gentleman that's doing the recruiting for city manager, and that's primarily it. I didn't get to attend the Glow Festival either. I did attend an event at the Reagan Library on Friday night, and I, they fooled me, I saw Fleetwood Mac and Journey, so that was, that was great. But then I learned that, I think the next night, they were at the Regal or somewhere for free. So, so I'm sure the money went to a good cause. Anyway, that's my report. Okay. Nine A. Nine B, quest for future council agenda items.
I know we had a constituent talk about body cams, and I don't know if it's a, I don't know if it's a financial reason that we haven't done it or not, but I'd like to request, I guess, a report on whether or not it's financially feasible for us to have body cams, and if not, if we could write a grant, or, I'm not sure how to go about it, can I ask for your guidance, Brian?
Yeah, actually, September...
Yeah, actually, September 23rd? Yeah. So it's coming back, it's coming to the council for your consideration on September 23rd.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yep.
There, just to add to that, there was some confusion. Because at one time, I thought that it was determined the expense and what have you. And I thought that it was tabled. So now it's come back to life. So there, there has been some confusion as to what's going on with cameras in our police department.
I'm more than happy to help with grant writing. I have gotten $50,000 grants, so...
Okay. Nothing else? All right. Tonight, we're going to adjourn in memory of Andre Moy. Andre Moy was the California Highway Patrol Officer who lost his life in the Riverside District in a shooting. So we'll close in his memory. Meeting's adjourned.